I just forget to download my stuff.
It's the longest minute ever. Yeah, I know. Sheesh. We posted for 7:00 here. Well, okay. Thank you, Bev Cam. It's 7:00 here on Wednesday, January 29th. We're in Beverly Middle School's library for our Committee of the Whole. Our first order of the night will actually be the pledge. And Ms. Robinson, would you lead us in the pledge? So we have a flag over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Okay. Our next order of business is actually to approve the meeting records from our meeting of December 18th. I do know that we were joined by our committee members-elect at that meeting. So I would just remind you, if you felt that you were present, you may vote or you may abstain at your pleasure. So I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting records of December 18th, Committee of the Whole.
Same rule.
Thank you, John.
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
Sure. Do we have any corrections, comments? All those in favor?
I'm abstaining.
I was abstaining.
Okay.
I wasn't there.
Okay, they're abstaining. Okay. So we have three in favor and three abstaining. I believe that means the motion has passed. Enter those into our record. Next, I'd like to welcome the multitude of our city's administrators for the school district to the table to give us a lot of information for our consideration in our budget planning this year. We will look at the items on our agenda, just in a slightly different order. I believe we'll start this evening with a financial overview. You're gonna do that. Okay, thank you, Dr. Charochek.
So it's red. I brought it in during. Thank you. I just want to be up here. That way I can see if I have questions. It's easier for me to answer from up here. So, thank you. I know this is our first kind of foray into the discussion about the FY21 budget. So we've met together as a leadership team and sort of thought a little bit about ways. Jean and I have been spending the last 24 hours together for the last seven days, I think, figuring out how we're gonna kind of go about this. So I know that in the past, you were familiar with Dr. Hershey's sort of order of presentation. I'm not gonna try to alter too much from that in that, you know, taking over so that there's not a huge change, but I think you'll see some differences as to the presentation and how we go about it. So I'm beginning tonight really with just a financial overview and to begin the conversation. Starting off, I thought, oh, and that, can you see that? I hope you can see that. The FY20 budget that we're in right now is at $61,017,942. So I wanted to introduce these just as starting points for everybody. So we have a jumping off point to know as we talk about different things that we're bringing forward tonight, including some ways to look differently at how we use some of the FY20 monies if it accomplishes some of our goals and our priorities. So in general, to break it down really easily, we look at it in two ways. Salaries, unemployment, and work compensation costs total up to $41,666,419, and that makes up 81% of our budget. And then there are expenses, our costs of goods and services, whichever you want to call it, non-salary items. And they're at $11,457,223, which is the other 19% of the budget. So I think that just starting off and kind of wrapping ourselves around what it is and where we start is a good way to go. As we enter into the FY21 budget season, there are some preliminary assumptions that we kind of make about the budget in the budget season that's coming up. When we look at revenues, we want to first think about some of the city appropriation. At this point in time, we don't know exactly what that will be. That will come a little bit later in the process. We do know, however, finally, we got the Governor's Chapter 70 preliminary budget released, and the amount for Beverly is $10,262,735. That is not a set in stone number, but that's a number that we've been told is reasonably reliable, that we can at least begin our planning process on. And that reflects the newly recalculated way of looking at Chapter 70 funding, as well as the impact of the Student Opportunity Act as we go forward. We've been told to project circuit breaker funding between 70 and 75%. The news on that front has been pretty good so far. We're really pretty confident that we can be looking at circuit breaker funding at 75%. Our federal and state grant funding, which are our entitlement grants, I wrote unknown changes because we have not been advised that we should be worried that it's going down. We have not been told it's gonna go up. I think it's been steady for the last couple of years. We took a couple hits two or three years ago, but it's kind of leveled off right now. But again, it's still an unknown until it's actually issued. And then finally, our school choice numbers. And we're not projecting big increases or decreases in school choice, so I think it's where we can reliably, you know, determine that the revenues that we get from school choice will be somewhat constant into the FY21 school year. So those are the assumptions for the 21 budget. The next piece of it is kind of looking at our, I wanted to share some numbers with you about our current staffing and about our current entering into FY21. This year, we're negotiating with all six units in the contracts, as well as some non-union contracts and employees in the current school year. So we're gonna be looking at entering into negotiations for all of those units. Not reliant on negotiations, however, what we already know about our contractual obligations. So we can project our column changes at $180,000. That's gonna be, these are numbers that we know that we are gonna have to find a way to fund in FY21. I'll project step changes for Unit A only is $465,024. And we can, we assume that there will be a $46,690 for the additional units in terms of step changes. So that's a total of $691,714. And just to begin telling you what that is, that's 1.1% of our total current budget right now. That's before we do anything else. So these are contractual obligations that aren't gonna go away no matter what we do. I put the number down the bottom, 1% of all salaries. That's just one of those benchmark numbers, and I know we've used them in the past, just so that you're starting to think in your head. When you think about our salary line, 1% of our salary is $446,173. So that's just a benchmark number for you to kind of keep in your head. Other potential increases that we need to be prepared for in the FY21 budget, we have been meeting over the past three days with the cost center, department heads, and principals. And at this point, due to enrollment increases, these are not really changes in programming. This is just due to enrollment increases. We can anticipate that we will need to add two elementary. We have 403 kindergarten students right now and 360 first graders. So the 403 kindergartners need to go to first grade, so there's a minimum of two first-grade teachers that we're looking at likely needing to add. We don't know yet what kindergarten enrollment will be for FY21, but we do know that we have to put those 403 students in classrooms for first grade. At the middle school, that includes a couple of positions that, for special education as well, and one at the high school at minimum that we know just from our enrollment increases and shifting populations. So in addition, we've been told to kind of keep our eye on health insurance costs increasing, and we always kind of look between 3% and 8%, and that would be between $232,000 and $619,000. In terms of special education, and I know Bethany presented the other night to the Finance and Facilities Committee, just keeping in mind, we have some estimated tuition increases between 2% and 4%. That's gonna be based upon cost and enrollment. Contracted services and legal fees are something that we always have to be aware of, that there are potential for increase in those accounts. And then our goods and services account, those are just our non-salary accounts, typical increases that would take place in those, whether it's utilities, snow removal, things that we don't know or don't know as we go forward. And then finally, and this was, I think this is the first time we've put this maybe on the radar, maybe it was there last year, but transportation costs are increasing, and that, those transportation costs are for regular education, but also for special education and for our homeless students that we have by, you know, legal obligations to transport. So those are just potentials that you want to keep in mind as we kind of enter into the I wanted to estimate for you increased enrollment costs, and this really just means, when I add a teacher, how much am I really adding? If we literally are adding another staffing position, what is the cost to the district? So when we hire, and when we've looked back historically, Jean and I looked back over the last three years or so, we estimate that our hires come in at an average of about $59,017, which for us on our current salary scale is Masters 5. And the cost of healthcare for each new hire is around $20,000 if they opt to take our insurance, which we have to offer them. So if we look at it, a good way to think about the cost of a new Unit A employee is gonna be $79,017, looking just at the six positions that I outlined earlier. And you'll notice the number went up because we went from three to two in the last three days. $474,102 would be what the cost of those new hires that we're adding just based on enrollments. So that's just to give you those figures. These are some of those benchmark numbers. Our total, our total budget is $61 million. And so if you think about it, I try to give these benchmark numbers, so as you're thinking about what's a 1% increase, or a 2% increase, or a 3% increase. 1% is $610,000. 2% is $1.2 million. 3% is $1.8 million. 4% is $2.4 million. 5% is $3 million. And I just want to kind of go back to the number that was here. How far back was it? Oh, I can, it's here, sorry. So what we did was we looked at, if we were gonna have a level service budget for FY21, that means providing the education and the services at the pattern that we are right now, our increases for salary and benefits is gonna be somewhere around up to $51,194. Our expenses, we incorporated about a 4% increase for goods and services, so $12 million for a total of $63,224. These are just rough estimates, but it's a way to kind of, you know, gauge what would, doing what we do this year in FY20 look like in FY21 if we just did exactly the same thing. And so that cost, that increase would be $22,6964. So that, any questions so far on any of those numbers? I know you've had some time to look them over, so I just thought, okay. So the last thing I wanted to also include is an update on Chapter 70 funding and the Student Opportunity Act. We had a webinar today, actually, that helped us break down the Chapter 70 funding and have a much better, I think Jean and I both have a little bit better understanding of how and where we ended up, where we ended up in terms of our increase. This is the first year of a seven-year phase-in of the Student Opportunity Act. The webinar that we were on today said that at least on the surface, the Governor's budget fully funds the intention of what the Student Opportunity Act asked it to fund. There had been some rumblings in and about that around whether or not one was 4% or 14%, but he was, Roger Hatch ran the webinar, and he was pretty confident that this is a fully funded version, at least on the way the Governor has presented it. It's an improvement in funding for benefits, for special education, for English learners, for low-income students. However, and there's a big however, we have to keep in mind that the restrictions and guidelines for the use of this increase and the requirements for reporting that will accompany it, and that's the accountability aspects for reporting to the Department of Ed, aren't available yet. We don't really know what they are. We have some general ideas about some of the allowable expenses, but we don't know, is it all $1,500,000? Is it some of the $1,500,000? Thanks, Jean. We just don't know. That is coming, and, you know, they're gonna be having more information for us in the coming weeks. We can expect that. So just wanted to start there.
Questions? Sorry.
She's all choked up.
All this money is getting off.
Sorry. It's a community board.
So when we were at the MASC training with you, the new members and I, there was some question about the long form and short form, and I think that you had some additional information to share?
The information is that we'll be short form.
Okay.
It should only be, it should be, it's a smaller reporting requirement. However, we don't know what that is, and it's not out yet.
Okay, thank you.
It's a shorter version. The cutoff was $1.5 million. So if you received more than $1.5 million, you're in the long form category. We received $1,500,000, which puts us in the short form category.
Okay.
Sorry. Anything else?
Any other questions on the overview?
All right.
Thank you very much.
So that's gonna bring me next, if I can talk, sorry, to the budget priorities. So if you recall, back on November 20th, we did a little exercise here at School Committee regarding our priorities and what priorities, and how they align with our goals, and what things that we're looking to kind of create some direction of what we wanted to do as we built this new budget. So what I've done is taken that information and sort of synthesized it into one presentation. I'm gonna go through this. This is really just to remind you of that activity that we did and give you some idea of the work that we've done since then and that before we move into the next phase. So we did an exercise with stickies, and as you can, as you can, I'm gonna let Dot do this until my throat stops.
So if you remember, when we were here in the middle school, you had an opportunity to put your priorities in, on stickies, and we put them into areas of critical need and non-critical wants. And then we also did this with leadership team and with parents. So this was in social-emotional learning, and this just kind of is a nice visual to show you how we did take everybody's sticky into consideration when we started to look at our priority lists. So this was for social-emotional. And what Sue did at the end was she took all of the stickies from each of the groups and started to go across the categories to put one list together with the top priorities that had the most frequency. So here you'll see for social-emotional learning, the needs that we found were critical, and the things on the right were things that would be nice to have, but they're not critical. She did the same thing for each of the categories, and so we're not gonna go through this because you'll see the whole, we just wanted to see how we use the stickies. And then you'll see that this is all captured here at the back. So for rigorous curriculum, we had the things that people found were critical, and they were coming up in multiple categories. So it wasn't just with School Committee or just with parents, but these were things that had a high priority and were coming up on multiple lists. So foreign language, the curriculum alignment came up on multiple categories. We had increasing the school day, which came up on two of the forms. And then again, foreign language came up. So you can see that some things started to come up in more than one category. Instructional design was the next category. And here we had three needs that were considered to be critical, and that was around professional development, staffing and resources to provide substitute training, and working on developing what we want for instructional practices. And then wanting was a more robust after-school program, offering more opportunities, especially at the middle school. Then our fourth goal, and you can remember that these were tied to the four district goals when we did the work, the fourth was school management practices. And here is our list for our critical needs, and then again for our non-critical. So what we did from that point was Sue looked at what Dr. Charochek looked at, what the frequency was from each of the four groups, and then also looked at how they fell under each of the, and aligned with our four goal areas. This was the leadership and the cabinet priorities in order of frequency. And you've had all of this, so I'm not gonna read through each of the bullets, but if you have specific questions afterwards, I'll answer those for you. This, the blue, so you can see that these are gonna be color-coded. So this is kind of like in a beige color. The School Committee is in a blue color in order of frequency. The parents group, this was in the order of their frequency.
Thank you. Awesome. So these three groups right here, individually, I took them, I aligned them with the goals, I looked at how often they came up, and I sort of calculated them together. Then I took a look at our district improvement plan and the goals that are in our district improvement plan. So the first goal is equal access for all students, and now I've categorized them by the actual goal area that they were assigned. I also color-coded them here. So green is the School Committee, blue were the parents, and yellow is the leadership team. You'll start to see that trends are kind of coming together. There's a lot of overlap in some of the priority areas that everybody identified. And I did this mostly to give you some guidance about what, you know, what are the other groups saying, too? What is leadership, I value, value, and what are the parents telling us, and what does School Committee want? So under the equal access for all students, coming to the top again was the social-emotional staffing and support. We see that over and over. There was a call for reducing and eliminating the kindergarten fee on many, on many fronts. And then again, back into some of the staffing patterns for special education and how are we serving our vulnerable students. The rigorous and consistent curriculum is our second goal. And again, a huge amount of support for thinking about, what are we doing around curriculum? What is our curriculum support and oversight? What's our alignment and instructional supports? What resources might we have be necessary for here? There was some call for, what are we doing in science and STEM, foreign language, again, from the parents and the School Committee? And then restructuring, building leadership. Is there a need to take a look at doing some of that? Finally, instructional design. This is more of our project-based learning. Again, I kind of got a little crazy with the color coding here because now they're in all three groups, so I'm kind of doing yellow, blue, green, everybody. But again, rising to the top is some curriculum support and oversight. And then again, STEAM, taking a look at some sustainability around, and in my mind, this is in the education and the curriculum part of it. What's that, what is our, what are we doing to educate our students around sustainability? Looking at flexible furniture for the high school. I put it up there, Betty. I bet you're happy. And staffing around career pathways. And career pathways is something that also continues to rise as we go along. And then finally, school management practices. And I think what I kind of tried to do on this, in this area, is taking a look at, these are all things that add to our budget, right? These are, and a lot of these things are things that are not, they're not reallocations, but sometimes they're new things. So I kind of categorized things that might have an immediate cost to them here, as well as other things. So again, the kindergarten and restructuring of fees for kindergarten, also transportation and athletics were considered. Curriculum support and oversight came up. The sustainability practices in our own operations, so how are, what are we doing as a district to support sustainability? What practices are we putting in place? Looking at salaries, talking about some positions within the operations side of things, the business analyst, the assistant director of transportation, changing our programming, looking at our transitions between pre-K, transitional K, K, and K to 1. We really had a lot of focus in our early childhood programs this year, and a lot of conversations from the leadership on that. And then some more that were included in terms of longer school day and that sort of thing. So, so what I did with these, and I'm actually gonna stop here for a minute, because what I tried to do is say, all right, so how can, these are all just like ideas and thoughts, but nobody has a really, I'm not sure if everyone has a clear idea of what they would look like in practice. So I chose three areas to kind of highlight and accentuate and give you more information. And so I wanna take a minute right now, introduce Betty Taylor and Heidi Riccio. Heidi is the superintendent from Essex Tech, and they're gonna come, and they're gonna talk to you a little bit about what it would look like if we were to think differently about some of our career pathway opportunities for some of our students at the high school. So if you guys don't mind coming up, then, and I'm sorry about my coughing attack. I'm better now.
Good evening. I'm really pleased to have Heidi Riccio with us as well, because we've really started a nice collaboration that we're very excited about. As you know, from some of the brainstorming that you've done and leadership team done, parents have done, and part of both the school with its accreditation visit and with our own vision of the graduate, one of the things the high school really wanted to pursue is being real clear on college and career pathways. And what we mean by that is to have a strand of courses that a student is taking to help enrich their understanding of particular pathway. And the other thing that we think is critical is that by junior, senior year, we have, are able to encourage dual enrollment. are able to encourage dual enrollment or more advanced courses like advanced placement. And whether the student is going to pursue a four-year college degree or whether the student wants to begin with work right out of high school, that we have a transition plan for them and some ideas of how to best, choose the best vehicle or avenue for you to begin that. We're looking at certification programs for students that aren't necessarily going on to college. And we're looking at partnerships and we have an exciting partnership that we've grabbed the opportunity for. This is an opportunity that you may have read about in the paper because other area high schools have been doing it. And Dr. Cherochek had reached out, I believe, spoke to Heidi initially and asked about that and we've had a chance to meet since then. We would like to offer for next year for the members of the junior class, the opportunity to enroll in Essex Tech, the vocational programs in the afternoon. There are five programs that are available and I'll let Heidi speak to that a little bit further. But we have, there are seats open for Beverly High School students to take those vocational programs in the afternoon. So what we envision is, and as you, as you may know, our schedule is a flip-flop, a Panther Pride Day. So a Beverly High School student could take as many as eight classes. If the students opt to do this partnership with Essex Tech, they would have on one day two high, high school, Beverly High School classes and then at about 11:30, they go to the tech to take their shop. And then the next day, two other Beverly High School classes and then go for the same shop again in the afternoon. And, and that would be a two-year program, so it'd start with the juniors, but they would continue on to their senior year. We think this is an exciting opportunity for, especially for students who may want to pursue work right after high school, but we think in some, other kids that might want to pursue a associate's or, or some other kind of program, but gives them that job experience so they understand where they want to get their training. This is an exciting opportunity for us. There's a lot of details to work out, but so far, so good. So why don't I step aside and let Ms. Riccio speak to you a little bit about it and then we can answer questions together.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me. My name is Heidi. I am the superintendent of Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School. We did extend the name last year because we believe that the agricultural component on the North Shore is extremely critical for us. We started a partnership like this last year with Gloucester residents. And the need came for Gloucester, for the laborers' union. And the reason why is that there was a workforce demand, obviously, with the construction and craft laborers that actually go from Boston to Gloucester. And so it's definitely a workforce need for them. Many fishermen in Gloucester actually in the off-season are laborers to substitute or subsidize their pay. So with that, we piloted a program in January of last school year with 10 Gloucester residents or students at Gloucester High School. Kids that were on the radar for either not going on for college, they may have had barriers to education, they may have been an English language learner or really were disengaged in the traditional model of classroom to classroom, you know, whether it's eight periods a day or six periods a day. So we introduced this partnership. It was funded through the Burns family, so it was dual-funded. So one funding source was the actual laborers' union, Local 22, out of Malden. And the second funding source was a private family foundation called the Burns Family Foundation. They're actually the Burns husband and wife team that live in Gloucester. It allowed us, this pilot program actually allowed us to really kind of bug out or kind of tweak out some of the bugs of expansion into other programs. As you know, we have a fabulous brand-new school, much like this school. But when MSBA actually did the funding, it was more important to get all of these schools to come together. And they didn't necessarily anticipate what the possible enrollment demands would be or the workforce demands or helping close that skills gap. So with that, at this time, we have about 1,382 applicants for 440 spots in the incoming ninth grade class next year. We have 116 students of Beverly residents that have applied for our incoming ninth grade class. Clearly, if we could take them all, we would love to, but we just don't have the capacity. So then how do we build that capacity? If you listen to Governor Baker's State of the Commonwealth Address, he clearly stated that these programs, they call them, the state calls them after-dark programs. We have been able to craft something creatively that actually happens during the school day, provided that the schedule works out with those sending communities. But the governor has really dedicated that tie, or time and money to these creative after-dark programs. It's actually at about minute 29:52. If you want to look up the governor's State of the Commonwealth Address, that's clearly when he states these type of creative partnerships. The first partnership was school, was Lawrence High School in grade of Lawrence. And if you know Commissioner Riley, he actually was the receiver in Lawrence Public Schools and really fought hard to increase access. We were then the second school district to be able to offer this type of creative partnership with our sending communities. We, in this school year, added to PBD and Salem. So PBD and Salem, as you know, are gateway cities. So they definitely receive a different funding source than a Beverly or a Gloucester. And we were able to write two competitive grants. One was with the Smith Family Foundation. You may or may not have heard of that foundation, but they were gracious enough to fund PBD and Salem residents of $300,000 over the course of two years. We also received a partnership grant with the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for $150,000 to further support the expansion efforts with Gloucester Public Schools. We would be considering doing a similar partnership with Beverly because we do believe that you are one of our largest sending communities of students that come into our school district. And we believe that there's certainly a workforce need for additional seats. We chose junior and senior year. And the reason being is that our kids at our school who are enrolled, they go on to cooperative education opportunities, which therefore actually they're removed from the school during the day, during their shop time. So then that opens up seats naturally into that shop time for either residents of Gloucester, PBD, Salem or Beverly. So we are seeking competitive grant funds. We do not have those grant funds yet. And I say yet because we would hope that we would get them. But it, the governor is very committed to making sure that seats become available for them. The MOU, just, and I'm sure you're going to have some questions, but the MOU with the other three sending communities is strictly for how do we work out the guidance component of it, any sort of career counseling part, the scheduling part, the transportation part. So each school district has actually a separate MOU. And then how do we support it and sustain it? As you may or may not know, Chapter 74 students actually get an additional cost per pupil rate for a student because obviously it costs more to educate due to the materials and cost of teachers in the, in the district. So to actually hire a shop teacher, it costs more than actually hiring a traditional teacher because of the workforce needs and the experiences that they have. And at this current time in school year 1920, it's 4896. It does anticipate that it will increase just over $5,000 per child in addition to the traditional Chapter 74 funding. So that's where we're at. We did open it up to additional programs. So with PBD, Salem and Gloucester, we had advanced manufacturing and construction and craft laborers. Looking at the available seats and other programs, we did expand it into other programs as you actually see in the paper in front of you. So certainly, yes, absolutely.
Just one other thing. As it relates to Beverly High School, as, as I mentioned, I currently have a committee of, of staff that are looking at college and career pathways to expand. So this is be a first step. And then we'd be expanding more with our own curriculum and preparing better transitions for, for students' choices. But what we're asking for, for this particular pilot program, so that we can begin it at the next school year, is that we're going to make some modifications with currently in our program of studies for the students who are interested. One of which is they would probably be dismissed from their second period class a little, about 10 minutes earlier so that they can get onto the bus and, and get to Essex Tech Agricultural School, somewhere in there where they'll work out lunch. So we would work that out with the teachers. So they probably would be assigned a required class like English or math. And the English and math teacher would know ahead of time that they'd have their, their class instruction would be structured differently and they'd be leaving a little bit earlier from class. We may need to do some course requirement waivers. And that's going to vary from student to student because, as you know, our freshman year is pretty packed with required courses and it opens up each year. So by junior year, they have to take math, they have to take English, they have to take science, they have to take a half-credit of wellness and, what did I forget? Science, math and social studies. So that's five slots. We have four slots. So some of those requirements we may waive to senior year or we may create, depending on the, the program that they're in, create a waiver for them. That's going to vary from child to child. So for example, some students may have had their arts credits already taken care of and other students might not decide to pursue arts till their senior year. Or some students may have already taken their history electives, their .5 and it's all done, so it's not an issue. Well, another student has to fit it in. So we'll be doing some personalized scheduling for the students who choose to participate in this program. And as I said, we're suggesting that as a pilot and then once we have our other career pathways determined and what courses we're offering, we'd offer the whole thing as a package. And then if we needed to make some more permanent changes, we'd, we'd bring that to you. So I'll step aside now and we can answer questions.
Ms. Visnick?
Thank you. So how many, excuse me, how many anticipated seats for, for this pilot program in Beverly?
To increase. Depending on how many programs, it's cost, when we looked at that cost factor, it's anywhere from 125,000 to 150,000 per 12 to 15 students. But those 12 to 15 students could be plopped into four different program areas. For example, if PBD has four laborer kids and Beverly has four and Gloucester has four. So it's really interest-based so that you would be cost-sharing. So it's not per program, it's per student.
So I think that originally in our conversations, you and I do not do this well, this coughing thing. So the, I think in our original conversation, we were, we were thinking that Beverly might be of, it might be, up to 36 seats might be available for Beverly students in, in, in general. As we watched the pilot programs as communities came on board, it seems that there's about 10 or 12 seems to be the number that most of the communities start with. We, we are going to begin the process of gauging interest and of seeing what's out there and seeing how we can do it. And it's also incumbent on funding, right? So if there's grant funding available, certainly depending on the amount of grant funding that we get, we could increase the number of students. So there's some, there's still some variables. Betty and I kind of think if we're going to be realistic, that we're looking at about 10 or 12 students in that first year.
Yeah, I would say for the first year because when we looked at PBD and Salem, we actually didn't get funding until June 14th. And by then, you know, kids had already changed, they have already checked. So we were kind of doing this in the summertime, just trying to fill some seats. But I would anticipate 10 to 12 in the first year because then once kids start learning about it, understanding it, parents start learning about it, understanding it, I can, I would anticipate that it may grow or that it would grow naturally.
And our, we're starting our scheduling process right in February. So that, that's another reason why we wanted to present this to you because we'd like to inform the sophomore class, their parents and, and the students themselves, as well as make sure our guidance staff is fully understands what needs to do for scheduling so that we can get that word out as quickly as possible and so people can, we can answer questions for people.
Ms. Quella?
So what if, when you do get this out to the class and there is a large response to this, like you have like 30 children that are like, I want to do this. How are you going to?
Well, there's a couple of things. What, what we'd really need to do, and this is where our guidance staff would work with, with Essex Tech, is that we really need to make sure students understand what the trade-off is on their schedule. So if, if you've got two, four blocks dedicated to your shop class, you may not be able to fit in music. Or you may not be able to take that art class that you wanted to. So we, that's, that's why it really has to be a personalized conference with the guidance counselor. So we'd want to make sure everybody's understand on that. If we, if we have that many students that first year, we're ready.
And the funding.
And, and the funding. We're, we're ready, we're ready to make that happen, working with Essex Tech.
Go left.
There is an admissions process, I should say, that we will be working with Essex Tech and its admissions process.
And there are some qual, there are some requirements that need to be fulfilled. So the students in order to be eligible need to have completed their competency determination in MCAS. That's a requirement that happens in sophomore year. But the expectation from Essex Tech is that students have fulfilled their competency determination in, in terms of the MCAS, correct, Heidi?
So the data doesn't necessarily come out until they're already really grade 11. So we, it's really up to you. Obviously, there's predictors and I'm sure that you kind of run your own predictions on where students are at and kind of where you're going to.
So I guess I could, maybe I could say this, so they have to be students in good standing, right? So they're, in order to be eligible because the, this is really intense. And I think it's, it's, it's a really exciting opportunity. I think some of the feedback we heard from the communities that began the process, I think making sure that we're very clear about what the expectations are going into the program is helpful. But as you're saying, I, I think that, you know, we, we don't know what to expect. I mean, if we have 80, we might have to think about what's our selection process because there's no way 80 are going to be able to go, right? But I mean, we, we know that there's availability for 30. It's just doesn't, it, as much as it seems like we think we would get that many, it doesn't, it hasn't panned out in other communities. So I think we're, we're kind of comfortable with the idea that it would probably be somewhere in the 10 to 12 range.
So follow-up to that then, is there a different qualification guideline for children that have IEPs or those that might have disabilities that want to enter this program?
So I think in particular, and Heidi and I have talked about this, actually this program is targeting, we're looking for students that might have learning differences, that have English language as a second language. We're, we're looking to try to make sure that we're all-inclusive for all students. So, you know, in terms of the only thing being in good standing, you have to have completed your credits through sophomore year.
And I think if we're talking about MCAS, we can talk about the signs MCAS haven't been completed. Yeah, those are the groups that we have been talking about that we felt like we haven't really serviced well as far as transition out of high school in the past. And that's what the school as a whole has been focusing on. So those are the students we're hoping we can, this is one way that we can meet their needs and really provide them an opportunity so they have a plan coming out of high school.
And I also think that one, in particular, looking back at the, in, in 2017, which are the, the current, rising juniors are going to be the 2018 group, right? So 110 students applied for Essex Tech or North Shore.
You can say Essex Tech.
And, and so 26 were, we have actually 28 sophomores sitting at, at, at the school right now. That means there are kids that had really originally intended to go there. They didn't get in on that first round. This is another opportunity if it's still something. Also, I think when we first met, you mentioned the idea that we choose the, the, the rising juniors. It's really around that time that your, the guidance is having these conversations with students that are saying, you know, what are, what are your plans? Are you thinking about a four-year college? You know, where do you think you see yourself going? And it's a great, it's, the timing is really nice in terms of grabbing sophomores, rising juniors for the program, so.
So it could really be a game changer for a student that has some learning differences or an English language learner who may not have even have known that we have existed. So we have found in some of our research with the other communities is that if you're a newcomer and you came in as a ninth grader, your focus was the specialized classes in order to get acclimated to the community. And many of them are community-based, so some of them didn't even know that we even existed. And so we want to also capture students, newcomers. But in a shop setting, often a special education student or a student that receives IEP services, you would never even know that they have a learning difference or challenge because they can perform and in often cases, outperform a student that does not have an IEP. an IEP. So, obviously, we welcome all. But, it's important also to give proof in the pudding, because, like Sue had said, it's not that we don't want an athlete, but if an athlete is very concerned about getting back to
Practice.
Practice, the schedule, even though they will be getting back, just may not be in their best interest. So, we have seen that some of the athletes have left the program because of that social interaction. So, it's definitely, the admissions process is more about making sure that the student understands that they are leaving their home school and their friend group to then come and learn a skill. And that can be challenging for a high school kid to do. And so, it takes a lot of courage to do that, particularly as a junior. So, we want to make sure that through the admissions process, they're successful, that's the goal. And it's not as simple as just, "Oh, I don't want to do this anymore." Once they're enrolled in the program, they're enrolled in the program.
And even things like, as you know, the holy and sacred senior privilege would go away for someone their senior year, because they're not leaving school early, they're going to their vocational program and working there. So, there's a lot of counseling about why this is important, and what the commitment is, and then, the choices you're going to make about your academic program.
I think I saw Ms. Robinson first, and then the mayor. So, Ms. Robinson?
So, I just wanted to say, I think this is a wonderful opportunity, and I think it's smart to start small. And, I don't think there's going to be the same as interest in junior year as there would be freshman year, because it's, like you said, it's a big change, and being somewhere already established. So, if they leave junior year, they know they're very serious about it. I think it's a wonderful opportunity, so thank you.
Mayor Cahill?
Thanks, Madam President. Dr. Riccio and Mrs. Taylor, I also think this is an important program. I'm glad we're now getting to where we're going to kick off our participation in it. I didn't hear, I heard, I heard and I saw, the thought that our students would be leaving at 10:50. What are the blocks over at the tech? What's the timing? And then, I guess I understand they'll be coming back on the tech bus runs at the end of the day. But, what are the time, what are the time blocks there, and what will they be doing? I see the different programming.
Sure. So, because they're in shop, there is no time block. You are there for the remainder of the day. So, depending on whether or not that child had lunch, so, for example, our Gloucester students have chosen to come and eat lunch with our students. So, they come down, they come down to the cafeteria, they eat lunch, some of them bring lunch, but they actually prefer our lunch, because they said it's better than, I'm not going to comment, because I'm not, I don't know what the lunch is in Gloucester, but, you know, everybody wants what they don't have, so they're excited to come. And so, they actually do have lunch with our students, and it's great. They come right in, we greet them as they arrive off the bus, they go right down to the cafeteria, the teacher then actually brings them to the shop area, and then they are there until 2:25, when then the bus, they then get back on the bus to their home district, and then they come home. So, they're working in the shop setting for the remainder of the day.
So, what's the expectation in terms of how much time they'll be in that shop setting? They've got to get from Beverly High in this case, have a chance to eat. What's the expectation in terms of total time?
It's typically, I would say 11:45 to noon, until 2:25. And, what works very nicely is, in a traditional vocational school setting, you're on an A-week, B-week schedule. So, A-week is your academics, B-week is your shop, and you alternate. With a partnership program, you actually experience your shop time every day. And so, with that, there's a lot of makeup time in your technical area. So, that's why the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, we are able to count them as Chapter 74 students, because they have enough time in that program area to be able to earn either credentials. And actually, if they have enough seat time, not seat time, but time in their program, at the end, two-thirds of the way through their senior year, they can go on co-op, much like a regular vocational student can go on co-op and earn money. And so, if, say, for example, advanced manufacturing, we have a partnership with General Electric. And this isn't every kid, this is for a motivated kid, but we have a kid that is working at General Electric, right now, at 17 years old, making $19 an hour. And when he graduates, he's going to sign on to General Electric, and he automatically increases his hourly rate to $25 an hour. And with that comes benefits, pension, tuition reimbursement. So, we're not just looking at a kid that's going to go out to work, but he may have aspirations of becoming an engineer, General Electric will pay for that engineering school. So, that's just kind of one small example of, if you have the right motivated student that wants to work, they can still go to college, because more education will forever be, no matter what industry you're in, but they can be earning money, you know, when they're 17 years old. That's more than just what a traditional high school kid would be earning.
And, is the expectation with this program that a student would select one of these five at the outset, or might they survey two or three of them initially?
That's actually a great question, because that's one of the things that we thought we did not do. Traditional vocational student does explore all of these programs. We did not do that, because we were limited in the number of programs, but we will be doing it with this new program. So, we would run a small exploratory, once that student was accepted, we would do a tour. So, we'd bring the group in, do a tour, do some team building, do an exploratory with the students, so that they got to see what it is a day in the life of that particular program. Because one of the programs may have more kind of sitting, as opposed to, or more computer work, as opposed to actually doing things or fixing things, or moving around the campus. So, it's important for them, much like our other intake of incoming grade nine, is to do an interest inventory, where do the interests lie? So, that's something that we would work with Beverly on. We actually use Naviance, and I'm sure you probably do too. But, there is a nice program in there for interest inventory, that we could actually pre-assess that student before they even come to us.
And we do that sophomore year.
Great.
Perfect.
Ms. Freddie?
Hi. I just, I know years ago, schools like Lynn Trade had partnerships with General Electric, where students would do, just as you described, they would go and do internships. Do you currently have that, any types of partnerships like that with these employers? And, would that be available to the students that would be part of the program you're describing?
Yes, so internship, the equivalent of internship, so internship is an unpaid internship, where they might do it for a semester, at a shorter term.
Like after graduation?
It's an apprenticeship, that's probably what you're talking about. So, General Electric used to have an apprenticeship program. They are actually bringing back their apprenticeship program, so they did away with it, I want to say, the mid-1990s, late 1990s. But, their workforce now is aging out. So, it's not as though they have all of this new jobs, the people that are working there are now aging out, and they need to replace them, so they're beginning to do the apprenticeship program. We are one of three schools, Gloucester High School, Essex Tech, as well as Lynn Technical Institute, have signed on with the governor's office and General Electric for a partnership, a training partnership, over the next three years minimum, in order to satisfy that need. But, with General Electric, when they get a large contract, a government contract, they are subbing out a lot of the parts to local machine shops, including some in Beverly. And then, they're, so they're subbing it out. So, there's a workforce need beyond General Electric, there's a workforce need right here in Beverly, and on the North Shore, for a machinist. But, that's just one example of the programs that we're offering.
Thank you.
Do we have more questions? Ms. Biznick?
I'd like to go back to the funding issue. So, did you say Chapter 70 or 74?
Chapter 74 is, so it's specific to vocational education.
Great, okay. So, you said Chapter 74 is additional $5,000 above and beyond the base Chapter 70, that we would normally get for a student. So, would those, so it's a multi-part question. Would those additional funds go directly to Essex to pay? So, if a child enrolls in this program from Beverly, the additional funding, would it come directly to you? It's just a matter of finance, that we just transfer that money to you?
Yeah.
All right, so if we do quick math, 10 students, $5,000 per student, there's $50,000. But, you said it would cost about $150,000 to run one of these programs, right? We'd cost share with someone else.
Sure.
But, let's just talk about one program. $150, we get $50,000 in Chapter 74. So, the cost to run this program, from Beverly's point of view, with no additional grant funding, would be $100,000. If we need to think about, are we going to do this? Are we going to commit to doing this? I'm just trying to think about, how much money would it really cost us? Again, if we don't get any other grant funding, if we take our most negative scenario, it would be approximately $100,000, yes or no?
So, if I could give you a two-part answer?
Sure.
That would be fabulous, because it's not as simple, unfortunately, as that. But, when you look at, when you do your October 1, we get, nobody gets any money until the following year. So, that's number one. So, now, we're looking at seed money to start the program.
Absolutely.
If you can imagine, I think I stated that, instead of, I know you gave an average range of $57,000 or $59,000 for a new teacher, the average machine teacher to leave industry is going to cost about $80,000 a year, plus another 30 for benefits, if they take benefits. So, now, you're looking at $110,000 impact to the district, not even including cost of materials to educate the student. So, it is costly. The average cost to educate a vocational student is about $19,000, and that's just kind of across the state. So, we're looking at a $10,000 cost factor per kid. So, when I say 12, yeah, I said 125 to 150, depending on. But, each program has limitations to how many students, say, they can take in, right? Before you have to hire another teacher. So, typically, in a machine shop, it's 12, really a max 15. Really, it just kind of depends on the machining. But, in, say, a horticulture program, you could take on 20 students. So, it's really the more students you have, the bigger bang for your buck, so to speak. But, in the high, when you're dealing with heavy equipment, you're looking at a much lower teacher-to-student ratio. So, that's really where the safety component and the cost, but yes, it is a cost, for sure. So, then, what would happen is, we would look at an MOU for the future, right? So, we would have to anticipate, if we say 12 students at 10,000, that's 120,000, minus the 5,000 that you would get, here's really what the true cost is. And then, if you decide, I understand that you have your own transportation, you decide to pay for your own transportation coming to Essex Tech, we obviously would just assume the cost, because they just hop on our bus anyway, so there's really no additional cost coming home. So, that would all have to be worked out in the MOU, if you decided to move forward on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to say what I, and if I'm wrong, correct me. I think we've had conversations that, hopefully, the grant funding, so the grant funding that we would be applying for comes at around $100,000, $120,000, right?
$150.
Yeah. And so, the goal was, if we get the grant, it's sort of like what you'll see later when I'm talking about kindergarten, we're going to, we have a bridge year, right? We have to seed to get into the program, because the money comes a year later. So, I think the, we think it's about, if we get the grant, that would be awesome. The initial cost, I think, would be right about that 120,000, if it was 10 kids, or 12 kids, or whatever. I also, however, the next year, it would go down incrementally by about $50,000, $60,000, right? So, then, the ongoing cost would be somewhere around $60,000 or $70,000.
That is correct.
And then, in terms of transportation, because right now, Essex Tech has to go do a midday run, call it a midday run, to the other communities, they don't have to necessarily do that here. While that's a cost that we would have on our own transportation side, it may be able to lower that a little bit on that side, too. So, that's, right now, about where we're talking in terms of funding, what it might cost. We don't have the specifics, but that's a general idea.
And the governor, just for transportation, even for you to have to pay, the governor just came out and actually is giving additional regional transportation reimbursement for these, after dark they call them, but it's for the partnership programs. And that just came out from the state last Thursday. So, there's an additional funding for the transportation as well.
And just one other thing, one of the allowable uses that I do know for the Student Opportunity Act funding is for something like this. So, in terms of thinking about what are the allowable uses of the extra money that we would be getting in, this does qualify for one of those allowable uses, so.
Ms. Biznick, one more question?
Yes, ma'am. So, is there, I guess, it's to both of you. Betty, I think I heard you say earlier that you want us to approve a program of studies change. Is there an ask in front of us, right now?
No.
Okay. Fantastic, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for this information.
Thank you. I just wanted to give these to you. So, this is Aidan, who's grade 11 from Beverly, and just wanted to give you a little sheet. It gives our enrollment at a glance, so just so that you know. And, so that you do know, we have 12 students that are participating in cooperative education opportunities from Beverly, and they're working in dental, electrical, plumbing, advanced manufacturing, automotive technology, and Arbor. So, definitely among the gamut. But, because they're living in Beverly, the money that they're making is hopefully staying in Beverly, and they're spending their money at the Chipotle.
Yes, they are.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next?
Sure. Did we decide on curriculum support?
Yep.
Being the next informational topic?
Kate and daughter, do you want to take this? Let me just do it. I'll just do it from here.
This is the presentation you found at your seats.
Yes, sorry. I didn't get that one out fast enough. We've been busy.
So, as Dr. Trochek had mentioned earlier, as we started to plan this evening, we had three key areas that we wanted to give you some more information around, that you'll see and need to be considering as we bring the budget forward. And the areas that more description around what it means can help to frame the conversation. And so, you saw, as she presented, the top priorities that were coming up on each of the lists, curriculum support came up, but that can be a very broad topic. So, we wanted to just give a brief overview of what we're thinking about, and what we're talking when we say curriculum support. And so, again, we always, everything that we're doing, we want to try to link back to our four goal areas. And when we're looking at curriculum, we're talking about work that will link to our first three goal areas, around engaged learning, rigorous and consistent curriculum, and innovative As we were doing the work, and we have Kate Trombley with us this evening, and as you know, earlier this year, we hired the Director of Innovative Practices, and so, she's our live artifact tonight. We're going to talk a little bit about the work that she's doing, and she'll help us answer any questions that you might have at the end. But, what we started to do, and one of the strands that we think about when we look at curriculum, is first, how are we doing as far as being aligned to the standards? That was something that came up in each of the categories. And this is some work that had been started last year, and we're in the process of updating this as we go through the year. I just had a meeting with the elementary coaches and principals yesterday. But, you can see in our four core areas, ELA, math, science, and social studies, the graph here just gives you a quick visual of where we still have work to do. So, if you see a plus, that means that we feel like it is aligned, it's up to date to the newest version of the standards, and we feel that it's in good shape. If there's a zero in a plus, it means there's been some work that's been done, but we still have work to do in that area. If it's a zero, we have some work done, but there's more significant work that needs to be done in that area. And where you see the dash mark, these are areas where they are new, recently. And where you see the dash mark, these are areas where there are new, um, recently revised standards, and we need to make sure that we're looking at the revised, and that's a, a complete, um, relook at what's happening in those subject areas. You'll hear us talk about structure. So right now, our current structure at the, uh, elementary, uh, we have our literacy and math coaches. At the middle school, we have our PLC times, which allow teachers to do, um, subject work together. And we have our new, and that's why it's in red, because luckily that was a position that you supported earlier this year for us, the Director of Innovative Practices. And we also wanted to highlight it because we're trying to look at our curriculum work in a more creative way, and not necessarily in the traditional pathways that you may have heard about, um, in the past. And you'll see, I think in a few minutes, um, the innovative practices that Kate has brought to the middle school. But the work that we still need to do is, um, in areas of vertical alignment. So in our elementary level, we have really strong horizontal alignment by grade level, but we haven't looked at that to make sure that we don't have gaps going from, um, grade to grade. So that's one of the areas of work that we're starting to do. And in all three areas, we need to get ourselves on a regular curriculum review cycle. And what that means is that, um, in every three to four year, you're turning over and looking at everything that you're doing. So one year you may be looking at English and, um, wellness, another year you might be looking at math and art, but you can't do everything all at once. And once you get it into a rotation, much like you do your policy review, you wanna make sure that it's on a standard review, and you're looking at everything on a regular basis. Um, at the high school, we currently have facilitators, and they meet once a month, uh, for department meetings. They do have some PLC and, um, PD days and summer work. Summer work would also be in the middle school. Um, but we are really looking at trying to change the way that we are looking at some of the work that has to be done, and making it much more data-driven. And you'll see, um, that that is one of the major impacts that Kate has had at the middle school already in just a few short months. You're gonna also see materials that are needed. And so as we're looking at curriculum, we're also looking at resources, um, textbooks, whether they're actual textbooks or online resources. Um, but they're the materials that are needed in order to, um, do the instruction. So at elementary, we'll, we're gonna have some need for some core resources from the math content development, as well as, uh, the new science standards. In middle school, we are looking at having to, um, enhance our math curriculum materials, also the new science standards. And, um, we just have a new social studies standards that, uh, started this year, and we really start to kick in with, um, some civics requirements and, uh, change to, um, back from world history to more of a US history in the eighth grade. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. At the high school, same thing, math, science, and social studies. Our English, um, is, is fairly strong and has been recently reviewed. And I think that when you look back at our, um, MCAS results that we saw earlier in the year, that it supports these three areas as well as areas that need to have, um, further work done. So Kate joined us in October, and right now she is working on doing, um, curriculum oversight for grades five through eight. They're looking at doing their, um, map reviews, so they're looking across subject areas. She's also started doing a needs assessment, um, for our targeted assistance. As you remember, the middle school is a targeted assistance school, and so that's been a key focus for the work that needs to be done. In fact, she's taken a lead with Matt in writing the grant that we, um, just received to, um, do our work with our subgroups and to strengthen those connections in English and math. Uh, she's been working on helping teachers to create common assessments, and I'm gonna let her talk in a minute to show you the work that she's been doing around data analysis. And I really think she took, um, the model that has started at the elementary school and brought it up here, and we've had enhancements made to our, um, data management system, which we use with Linkit, that has, um, gonna have some major payoffs. And it's allowing us to look at both longitudinal data and to give some predictive data as to how students will do based on our benchmarks, um, how they will score on the MCAS tests. And, um, as I mentioned, she worked with the partnership. She's doing professional development, both embedded in the classrooms and after school, and it's tied right to our goal areas around UDL, um, our co-teaching model and looking at instructional practices around, um, project-based learning. And we're starting with transitional skills. She's met in the last week, and they have further meetings coming up with our coaches at the fourth grade level to help strengthen that transition for students that are going from fourth to fifth grade. Um, and we're working on our MTSS model across the entire district, and that's in making sure that we're, it, it's a big learning curve to change because for years, the model has been, um, for teachers that we are reactive. So we wait until a student has a problem, and then we try to have interventions to change that. What we're trying to move towards is what we call a multi-tiered system of support, which means that in the planning phase, we're thinking about where students are going to struggle. And also, um, one of my passions is how do we make it rigorous so that we're making sure that we're pushing students that are at the upper end to challenge them as well? And so this model takes that into effect from the planning stage, not waiting for something to happen. So it's a more proactive stance than a reactive, um, one. Do you wanna talk a little bit about the data?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, good evening. Um, so one of the things that we have been working hard on, um, since October and before my arrival there, for the, um, uh, September and, and early fall, is creating, uh, really strong PLCs or professional learning communities for teachers to get together during the school day and talk about data and make really good instructional decisions for students. Um, we have been partnering with Linkit as our data platform, and most recently have added some additional features to our Linkit platform so that we can be more predictive and longitudinal now that we have a few years of data, um, for, on our students. So this is just a, one very quick, um, uh, snapshot, this is real data, but it has been, um, redacted so that these are not students' names, but they are students', um, actual data. And one of the things that we are looking at is kind of how are they doing on our internal measures? And then also, how are they, how does that stack up against external measures? And they've also helped us to run some validity assessments to calibrate whether or not our in-house assessments are strong, um, predictors of success on the mass curriculum frameworks, which they are. We're very, um, pleased with our in-house assessments. So, um, we are having data meetings that are structured around a protocol. Um, and one of my jobs day-to-day is to go around to these PLC meetings and help facilitate what a data meeting could look like and kind of scale that, um, for, uh, the middle school. Another...
Explain what bubble is.
Yeah, oh, sure, the bubble, yeah. Um, so another thing that we wanted to be very clear about is that we were using this as it, for instruction, right? So we're not just looking at data just haphazardly, but we're being, um, thoughtful about how that will change our best practice. And so one thing that they just added, um, as a feature is in this, uh, la- last two columns, you can see there is, um, an example of a, a, a bubble. Um, and so we are also looking at students that are, and to give you just kind of an idea of looking here, how a group of students did on grade five, um, ELA, MCAS, and how a group of students did on our most recent midterm benchmark. Um, what we're able to do is follow a student and see, well, how did they do in fifth grade? How did they end the year in fifth grade, both on MCAS and a benchmark measure? How did they, um, how did that stack up at the beginning of this year? And then where are they now? And one of the things that we've added is looking at our, um, students that are meeting expectations, and we would safely say, oh, you know, the, they're okay, we don't really need to think about their instruction. But we've kind of siphoned off the bottom ten percent of the students that are on track to meet expectations to make sure that we're not missing anybody when we think about, um, an additional practice opportunity or some sort of tiered intervention. So, um, we're making sure that we are, the kind of unpacking what we thought was just kind of those levels of data to be a little bit more, um, strategic and thinking about the students that could go either way, and we wanna maybe build their confidence in that particular curriculum standard. So that's a feature that we worked with our rep to kind of design for us in-house, for Beverly. And, um, we just are in the process of doing our mid, uh, year data meetings right now, and the teachers are just loving, kind of learning more about how we can use data analysis to move our instruction. Um, and those are the conversations that we're currently having. Similar to that, we also now have a feature where we can look at a classroom performance. This is a grade six ELA class performance. We just had this data meeting the other day. And we can really, um, run some analysis by standard and think about kind of where are we, how, how are our students performing? So we're having a lot of discussions around, is this a standard that we have taught? Is it just that they haven't taught, taught it yet? And how can we plan to teach that in our future instruction? And then also having some kind of question, a questioning analysis where we can say, wow, only, you know, sixty-five percent got question twenty-eight, let's unpack that and think about, is this a, a, a matter of depth of knowledge? Are we not being rigorous enough in our instruction, and that's why they weren't able to perform at this, at this level? Or is it something that just we haven't taught yet? But I think the other, to, to Dot's point, we're also able to have the conversations about kids that score a ninety-five on a pre-test on information that we have not taught yet. And that's a, a whole different kind of planning and, uh, process. And so we're doing, uh, having a lot of new conversations about how we can expand standards and move beyond standards when students are already reaching our expectations and meeting them early in the year, so.
So we know you'll have a lot more questions as we're going through the whole process, but we thought that this would, um, give you some overview of how we're really taking a different approach and a different look in what we're talking about when we, um, mention curriculum support. It is very complex, and it's approaching things from multiple directions. Any questions?
I have a quick question right off the bat. Um, would you describe the need for curriculum supports to have more Kate Twombly's throughout the district?
We'd like to clone her. We could just clone her.
If you could find a way to clone her, that would be my number one.
Yeah. Or, or is there additional software or resource? It's, it's mostly people.
It's, it, it could be both. So we're looking, this is actually some information you're gonna hear in our entry plan that we have been working on as well. Um, and so we're looking at, um, approaching things from a multi-tiered approach. And some of it will maybe, um, making what we're having here at, at the high school or at, you know, at, uh, multiple elementary schools, we're looking at different models, and we're looking at different resources. So that will be something that will be coming forth as part of the budget presentation. But we wanted to show you this as an example of what we're looking at, um, as we're bringing that forward.
Well, and I think too, what's important is when we look at how to do this, it's not simply just, we need more people, so keep adding positions, it's reallocating. If you remember how we created Kate's position, we collapsed a couple of other positions to do that, right? So it's taking a look at what's effective, what's working, what things can we change? How can we, we reallocate the way that we're utilizing what we term as curriculum supports now, so that it, they'll, there, I, we're, we're bringing it here obviously because there'll be an increased cost, but the increased cost would be relative to whatever the reallocation of resources could also be done at the same time. So we're not looking to just say we want all new positions in all these buildings, but making sure that when we add them, I think what made the, um, our artifact Kate Twombly so effective is that we really looked, we didn't just say we need a person, we said we need a person, we need, we know this is the curriculum areas, we know that data anal- data is really the area that we have, we feel like we have the most need to improve. How do we do that in a thoughtful way? And so we collapsed a couple of positions and came up with a position that met the needs of that building. And I think that's our approach to, so when we look at the, at the board up there, at alignment and relevance and leadership and common planning and professional development, we need to be mindful and thoughtful about how we do that. But it will be, uh, in terms of funding, funding is needed to do that. So I think that's, I think that's the whole purpose in, in coming forward with that, so.
Thank you for that explanation.
Thanks.
Are there other questions? Mary Cahill?
Thanks, Madam President. Um, so thank you for the, for the presentation and the work you're both doing. Um, as I look at the goals here, I don't see the word instruction yet, I kinda know that it's inherent in everything here. And, and so I'm, I'm looking, and I see oversight evaluation, I see content-specific supervision. Can you just share a few thoughts about how we are working with all of our staff to continually develop and improve and try to get to that, that high level of, of excellence and effectiveness day-to-day, classroom by classroom, grade level by grade level throughout the district? Um, I, I just wonder about, I see a lot of great things in action when I do go in, in the schools, but just how, how you're intentionally working that through all of this?
And a lot of that's happening in the PLC, which is the professional learning communities when the teachers are meeting together. That's where, where Kate is doing a lot of her work. Um, and they also, you have, you're team leaders now after school that are meeting.
That's right, yeah. And I think we also, we always make sure that our PLC agendas and data analysis protocols are framed out of, kind of in that, to be simple, so what is it telling us, you know, what is the data telling us, so what, what does that mean? And then now, what, what is, when we leave this room, what are we going to do instructionally that's going to change and improve outcomes for kids? So that's always part of our data analysis, that is the most important time. We spend, I think, less time looking at the numbers and the fancy charts, and we spend much more time talking about best practice. Um, and then in addition, the professional development opportunities that we're offering on our PD days or during some of those PLC times, I'm been asked just to come in and give some presentations on universal design for learning, and how do we create some better assess, common assessments and rigor and depth of knowledge? So we're kind of embedding that in during the school day during our PLCs.
And March third, we have our, um, District-Wide Professional Development Day coming up. We just met yesterday, and, and it, our, our goal areas for the PD day are the same four goal areas you see here. All the teachers had to choose one of those goal areas to be working in. And what we're trying to come up with, um, is a balance between doing, maybe having a speaker that is addressing one of those four key areas, but then also having time during the day to allow teachers to work together independently to work on projects. But I think an exciting part this time is we're doing what we call, um, mini-chats. And so we have about an hour and a half. We're, we're gonna have multiple things going on in the building, but the goal of it is it's that it's a practical application that teachers can bring back to the classroom. So for an example, um, we have some teachers that are gonna do presentations around number talks and how to have math discourse in their classroom. They're gonna be talking about doing puzzle talks, um, and how to bring that back into the room, and also think about, um, the UDL, the Universal Design for Learning. How do you make something challenging like a puzzle talk available for all students? And we have one that's gonna be going on in the writing area. We have some, um, SEL classes that are going on, uh, uh, social emotional learning workshops. So it's gonna be a lot of little mini-workshops that teachers can choose which one they wanna go to. But the goal of it is that it is based on practical applications, not theory, that they can bring back and, and show and implement right into their classrooms. So that is directly tied to instruction.
Mr. Mulady?
Sure. Um, just saying thank you so much. This is absolutely incredible. I mean, you really hit the ground running, and you're, you're laying an excellent foundation for the district, all within October one start date. So you must be exhausted, or you might have like a body double.
Some roller skates in the budget car.
There you go. Um, so I, it, my question's, um, connected to the social emotional learning, so if you can go to the, the slide with the bubble one. So I was just wondering, in, in, in addition to seeing how our students are doing with their scores, could this type of information be applicable for, um, you know, mental health, physical health, so if the kids, you know, coming back from concussion or noticing like repeated absences? So this, is, is that program capable to apply this to?
Good question. I think, um, anecdotally, we've been having a lot of those discussions. So to give you an example, um, a student, and I don't know if I have a really good example on this particular slide, but a student that all of a sudden they're, you know, meeting, exceeding, meeting, exceeding bubble, you know? And then we're able to have really personalized conversations about that student experience, and very often, the conversation leads to, oh, they were just out with the flu, or they're having a tremendous amount of anxiety. And so we start thinking about the social emotional planning alongside of the instructional planning. And so that's kind of what these, um, reports, and then the luxury of having that PLC embedded during the day so that we can really meet and then say, okay, we're not done, we're gonna meet the next PLC and continue this conversation, and also maybe in the meantime, check in with that student and kind of have some more information there. Um, and so that's kind of one of the features. One thing that we are kind of always monitoring though is, is that kind of, you know, longitudinal student experience, and then how that fits into some of our s- child study team planning that we're also doing around the MTSS model. So using this to also say, okay, we've identified these ten students that are kind of in this bubble. Um, so one thing we've done in grade five math, for example, um, we've identified those students in that grade five bubble, and now we're going to be providing some additional practice time in the morning for those ten students. I'm behind the scenes gonna pull them out and put them in a separate little data group so that then as we give them their unit assessments, I can closely monitor a smaller group of students. So it gives us kind of that luxury to monitor, uh, the student level.
And this is an early, um, implementation, but it really takes the, um, carries what's happening at the elementary school. I've been spending the last week going around and watching, um, data meetings, where the teachers now, instead of people telling the teachers what the data are, the teachers are telling their data stories. So they're, they're looking at their data, and I, one I just loved, um, they, they actually had the pictures of the kids, so as they were talking about the kids, that, that... So as they were talking about the kids, that, they're right there, so it's personal. And then when you look at this, if you take a look at the P Harrington, you can see that that's a student that was, yeah, it's a fake name. Was meeting in grade five. And then you see there's a progression that is, that is continuing to go approaching and now they've slipped down to the bubble. And so they're definitely moving in the wrong trajectory. So that could be a conversation that you have with the teacher that says, all right, what's going on with this kid? Is it an attendance issue? Is, you know, are they going to the nurse every time that they're in math class? And so that, this just starts the conversation that can then go into all of the things that you're talking about.
Also, we're using this data at the whole school level as we partner with Desi and think about some of our students that are at risk. And we can look at it demographically and in other ways too, and that information has been really helpful for our planning.
And Desi really liked our platform.
Oh, they love it.
So this is, the platform is, we're only in our like third year of implementation. The first year was really a pilot. Last year at the elementaries, they dug really deeply into it. And this year, both the middle school and the high school are kind of entering into the utilization. It's, it's a, it's a very robust platform. So in terms of your question, it could, E-WIS data and risk factors can be added into it. We're still working on making, it's a three-year plan and rolling it out. But, and there are ways for data lockers, so you could put rubrics in there on anything you want. However, this is just really a solid year one implementation at the middle school in terms of utilizing it. The elementary is a couple of years ahead and so they have a little more understanding of how to utilize it, but.
One of the conversations we had with the elementary coaches and principals yesterday is we're starting to look, review the ELA standards again for them. And they're talking about project-based learning. And so they're now trying to move to the next level that says, okay, if we're doing project-based learning, what is our real learning targets that we want to make sure that students have as a transfer goal? And how do we link it into, link it? So that they're making those connections naturally now.
But I just wanted to go back to, you know, the reason that we brought forward this presentation at this time is, is when we think about the priority list and what is curriculum support, I wanted everyone to have a better understanding of what we would be thinking about and when we would come forward with, you know, what would that funding that would be curriculum support be used for? It's for opportunities to dig deeper into wherever our deficits are within the district in terms of strengthening some of the instruction. So in it, in the end, it always is about instruction. So I was glad you asked that because in the end, it trickles down to what happens in the classroom and what are the outcomes for kids, so.
Ms. Freddie?
This is fantastic. Outside of using it as a tool for all the teachers, do, is it being used or do you have plans to use it also in working with parents and guardians? Like sharing this at like conferences or when needed?
That's a great question. I think at this point, because it is so new, the teachers still are feeling like, can I speak to this in the way that I would really give it justice? So I think we're getting there. But it is, we're, we're utilizing this data when we have a parent conference and someone comes in and we want to have a conversation. If a student is in the pre-referral process, we're able to look now longitudinally over a couple of years and kind of think about that student experience. So I think that it's certainly going to be part of, kind of in the fold of parent conferences moving forward.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies both, for joining us and for the information. And next, Dr. Chirocek is going to present us some additional information about full-day kindergarten.
So maybe the moment you've all been waiting for. So again, another area of priority that comes up for the last three years, I think we've had a lot of conversations about the kindergarten fee and about our intentions for that. And I remember distinctly over the last two years, having a request for, why don't you just come forward with a couple of plans and, and show us some multiple options and what we would maybe be able to do to get there? So that was my goal. My goal tonight was to kind of come forward and share with you a couple of different ways to address the fee and give you a couple of options as you think about what you might want to do moving forward. So first of all, I'm going to bring you to this first page. This is FY twenty, what we have available in terms of how we're paying kindergarten salaries. And so I want to start with utilizing the information around kindergarten salaries because at this point in time, given the reductions that you've made in fees and given the number of students that are attending full day versus the number of students in half-day, the narrative from three years ago where, oh my goodness, we need to add six teachers and we need five more classrooms and we need materials and supplies for all of those kids, has now gone away. Because right now, we literally have seventeen point five kindergarten teachers and to run full day, we would need eighteen. So we would be talking about an increase of a point five kindergarten teacher and a point five para. And that cost would probably to the district be around thirty-five thousand dollars. So that, as I go through this, you might have some questions, I'm going to do my best to explain it. The first thing that I wanted to do is make an assumption that, have you understand that as we go through the kindergarten salary lines, I'm keeping the salaries constant because you know that, as we talked about in our first presentation, we're accounting for step, column and cost of living increases in another part of the budget. And if I accompanied, if I accounted for them here, they'd be accounted twice, right? So it'd be double, double dipping, that's right. So, so then you'll see that when I talk about that salary line, it stays the same FY twenty-one, FY twenty-two, FY twenty-three, assuming that we're going to be accounting for any other increases somewhere else in the budget at another time. So this is the story of Beverly in FY twenty right now in terms of how we're funding our kindergarten salaries. And this is Unit A teachers only. So our anticipated revolving revenue this year, at the end of the year, will be forty, four hundred and sixty-seven, six forty-five. That is, I got that number derived from our anticipated revenues, which are the collection of our fees over the course of this year of three hundred and fifty-four thousand and the carryover balance that we brought forward from FY nineteen of a hundred and thirteen thousand, six forty-five. So that's where I got that four sixty-seven, six forty-five number. In our appropriated FY twenty budget, we have accounted for salaries for kindergarten at eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight. So that means that we have available funds for funding our kindergarten salaries right now as we stand, one million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, twenty-three. Our current kindergarten fee, as you all know, is twenty-one hundred dollars. So that's just sort of setting the stage as we move forward. So what do we have for staffing right now in our schools? We have four full-time kindergarten teachers at Ayers, three full-time teachers at Centerville, four full-time teachers at Cove, three full-time teachers and one half-time teacher at Hannah and three full-time teachers at North Beverly. The salaries are paid for out of these in this way. This is how we are proposing to pay for the salaries. In our appropriated budget, we have eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight. That would cover eleven point five. I'm going to say that about eleven point five. I did do a little rounding, but in, in order just to kind of let you know where we're putting things, it's not exactly. And in our revolving, we're going to use revolving funds of three hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy, and that would cover the other six FTEs for kindergarten, making our total salary expense for FY twenty, one million, two hundred and forty, one hundred and forty-eight. Our anticipated carryover, just given the current state that we have right now, would be ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five. That would be in the revolving that we would be carrying over to the FY twenty-one year, given if we leave everything exactly the same right now. So I'm here tonight bringing you three different options for either an elimination or a reduction of the fee and a, a reduction with the intent of elimination over the course of two years. In our first, I'm going to call Plan A, we would plan to use a hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars of the two hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars that is currently unallocated and resides in AD seven hundred sixty-one, oh thirteen. That is the new chapter seventy money that was brought forth and is sitting right now. When we, when we accepted it into our budget, we accepted it into that contingency fund, knowing that we would have to come to school committee in order to use those funds in any way. The, we're going to, we would accomplish this by taking a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars and transferring the money into the appropriate budget accounts that would cover kindergarten salaries, reducing, and, and so that actually would in essence raise our appropriated money in kindergarten salaries. So that would allow us to carry over enough money in the revolving account that would bridge that shortfall in salaries in chap, in FY twenty-one until chapter seventy funds are received for kindergarten students in FY twenty-two for the students that were currently paying full or partial tuition. So the following slide shows the distribution of those funds. So the numbers on the left would be, we have appropriated eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight. We would draw a hundred and seventy-three, seven seventy out of that contingency fund and allocate that using appropriated funds so that we would be covering one million, forty thousand, one forty-eight. And then we would utilize two hundred thousand out of the revolving funds that we know we have that would cover that one million, two hundred and forty, one hundred and forty-eight salary expense that we have this year. What we would then do, so if you notice, we'd be using two hundred of the four sixty-seven, which leaves us a carryover of two hundred and sixty-seven. In FY twenty-one, when we get no, we're not charging fees, but we're not also getting any chapter seventy money because we can't get money on kids that we charged any partial or full tuitions for this year. We would draw, but that one seventy-three was, became appropriated in FY twenty. So again, it's an appropriated line in FY twenty-one. We'd pull two hundred thousand out of that revolving account, covering that one million, two hundred and forty, one forty-eight. And then in FY twenty-two, we would again have our one million, forty, one forty-eight in appropriated. We'd utilize the remaining sixty-seven, six forty-five that was in the revolving and we could draw, and we will absolutely receive, where we're confident, Jean and I have great confidence, that we would get at least one thirty-two, three fifty-five in chapter seventy funds in FY twenty-two, allowing us to cover the one million, two hundred and forty, one forty-eight. So in this option A, we would eliminate the fee for FY twenty-one going forward. And by FY twenty-two, we would be recovering all of the money by bridging the money for the revolving. We would be covering it in chapter seventy funds that we get forward. So do you, would you prefer me to do all three options or do you want to take questions on one first?
I think we have some questions.
I think, yeah, just a clarifying question. So you're okay with the revolving fund being spent down to zero because what comes into that are tuitions and the tuitions will be going away? So revolving fund is just spent down and gone?
Jean would no longer report on the kindergarten revolving.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Ms. Visnick?
When you, when you say that the new, when we go from the top left to the bottom left of the new appropriated funds and then we use that one million, forty thousand, one hundred and forty-eight in each of the other three equations?
Yep.
That number, you made a statement about, we added in, we added in the SOA money from this year, the one seventy-three to get to that number?
The, the chapter seventy funds, right? It wasn't necessarily SOA money, but it was the new chapter seventy funds that came in in December. Yep.
And that those funds would renew the following year?
Well, because they, I, I think we have good confidence, given the governor's budget that we saw come out, that we're not going to lose any of the money that came, that, that, I remember when it came out, we were like, oh gosh, it's new money, but are we going to be sure that we're going to get this money again next year?
Right.
We have confidence that that money's going to remain there.
Right. So earlier in the evening, when you presented to us that next year, we expect to get one, I'm going to round up.
Yep.
Because I'm, I love bigger numbers.
One million, five thousand.
One, I was going to go all the way to one point, one million. So in essence, part of that one point one goes to here.
Nope. That money is already, that one point one is over. So, so the, the, the money that we already received in is before the one point five thousand, one million, five thousand. So that we are, because our chapter seventy is ten million, two hundred. Last year was nine million, two hundred and that nine million, two hundred included that.
Okay, great.
Okay? Yep, thank you. All right. All right. So now I'm going to move on to the other two options. I gave two options for a two-year plan. One of them involves using the hundred and seventy-three, seven seventy money that's sitting in the contingency. I'll call it contingency, I don't know if that's the word you use, but. And the other does not involve using that money. It involves leaving that money there, except for that, the only requirement is that money would need to be used for one-time expenses only because we would, as Loretta just asked, need it to be there in FY twenty-one. So if we, we couldn't put it into a salary or something that was recurring because it wouldn't then be there. That's C, right. Those are the two different options. So Plan B is going to be a seventy-five percent reduction in the kindergarten fee, down to five hundred and twenty-five. We'd follow the same procedure in FY twenty. We would utilize hundred and seventy-three, seven seventy from the contingency, one million, forty, one forty-eight. We would still use two hundred thousand of the revolving, leaving two hundred and sixty-seven thousand that carries over. But in addition, we'd be adding and collecting eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty more in fees. So in FY twenty-one, we'd have one million, forty in the appropriated. We'd have eighty-nine, two fifty that we were bringing in in kindergarten fees and we'd use one hundred and ten, seven fifty out of the revolving, meaning that our new bridge year, instead of being FY twenty-one, is now FY twenty-two. That's the year when we're not charging fees and we're not getting any chapter seventy money. We would have to utilize two hundred thousand out of the revolving account and we'd come up with one million, two hundred and forty, one forty-eight. And then in FY twenty-three, we would be eligible to collect that chapter seventy money. We would have forty-six, one forty-five remaining in our revolving, wiping that out. And we would use, we would anticipate one fifty-three, eight fifty-five in chapter seventy money, meeting that twelve, forty, one forty-eight.
Can I just ask a clarifying statement? When you say wouldn't be getting chapter seventy, I think what you're really saying is we'd be getting a half-student proportion?
We wouldn't be getting chapter seventy on anybody that we charge tuition for in FY twenty-one. So, so we do not receive chapter seventy funds, which come a year later for any student that we charge tuition to. So we would be charging tuition to some students, well, the amount of chapter seventy funds. But, but anybody that we charge tuition to, there's not money come, there's a deduction from chapter seventy. So, so we would not be getting it, instead of not getting it in FY twenty-one, we would not get it in FY twenty-two because we would have extended another year of tuition collections. Does that make sense?
Ms. Visnick, do you have a different question?
I do have a different question.
Okay.
Thank you. I wish to ask about the differences on this slide on the bottom right of the anticipated chapter seventy funds of a hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five compared to the anticipated chapter seventy funds on the previous plan, Option A, of a hundred and thirty-two, three fifty-five.
Jean and I actually might think that we'd get a hundred and seventy thousand, but we only needed a hundred and thirty-two to make Option A work and we only need a hundred and fifty-three. However, when we, because we don't know for sure, but we use the numbers to make it, you know, we anticipate a minimum of one thirty-two and we anticipate a minimum of one fifty-three with confidence we think we'll have that money. And it's a year later and so there might be more money. But when we, I mean, we spent all morning on a webinar and now that we understand exactly how it's calculated, we tried, if we looked at the number of students that we have that we would gain, we think that it would be probably about one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Is that correct, Jean, when we did that today?
Yes, yes. I mean, these numbers are, you know, estimates that we think, what we're really trying to get to is to show you that we'd be able to get to the one million, two forty, one forty-eight.
Without worrying.
Without worrying. So yes, we were anticipating that we'd be getting more, but showing more and then having excess would kind of confuse the issue. I thought, sorry.
So really, so really in the bottom of, of Plan A, this number?
Yep, it could be.
The one thirty-two could be much higher.
Could be one seventy or it could be the same number that's on Plan B, the one fifty-three.
Right. So what I, what I'd like to explain is that, as Sue has talked earlier, that we have so many extra kindergartens and our enrollment is increasing. So with our enrollment increasing, our chapter seventy is going to be increasing, how can I figure out how much of that is for that kindergarten? So I'm confident that we're going to get at least that amount.
We don't have an exact number, but we, we are very confident that we could meet that one hundred, one million, two hundred and forty expense line. I guess that's what we're trying to show.
In both scenarios, we would drain the revolving.
Yes, because we don't need.
And so we used math that leaves us at zero revolving.
Correct.
And, and we're confident of chapter seventy reimbursement.
Correct, at this point in time.
And there would be some leftover. Yes. Okay.
All right. All right. I'm going to go quickly to Plan C. Plan C does not require using any of the new contingency money. Instead, what we would do is we would use eight sixty-six from appropriated. Instead, what we would do is we would use 866 from appropriated. We would use 373, 770 out of the revolving funds. That would allow us to meet our 1,240, 148. In FY '21, however, we really could only reduce the kindergarten fee by 50% and charge, we'd have to charge 1,050. And that 1,050 would be 177. That's, that 177,000 is based upon this year's enrollments, assuming enrollments are the same, assuming the same number of people who pay tuitions and all of those. We have to make some assumptions as we go along. And we would only need to use 23,000 of the revolving to meet the 1,240, 148. FY '22, again, is our bridge year. We'd need to use 200,000 from the revolving account. And then in Chapter, in FY '23, we would again drain the revolving account. I like using that language better. And then we would, it would require us to receive 152, 125 in Chapter 70 funds to meet the 1,240, 148.
Quick question for Ms. Sherburne. The $1,050 would be for the full pay, correct?
For the full pay, yes. And then we'd still operate with the, you know, scholarship.
The scholarship. So the, the half pay would be 525, and the quarter pay would be 213. What is the average Chapter 70 per pupil?
Chapter 70 per pupil is, I think I calculated this year, it came out to about $1,900 per student, if I took in the 9,257 divided by a student count at one point.
But that's assuming that you're dividing it by the even number of students we have. Because it's not actually that, because there's some incremental money that comes for different students in different subgroups. So it's, it is a very complicated formula. But I think, given the work that we've done over the last few days and the webinar that we attended, you know, we have pretty good confi, I'm very confident that we're at least staying safe by doing these three options.
And the fact that we charge, if we charge even $1, they're ineligible.
For that, they sit that whole year out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there other questions, Ms. Robinson?
So is it the same formula for assistance for the fee regardless? If, say, the tuition was 525?
It doesn't matter. So if you, if you, if we charged $20, we cannot collect any Chapter 70 money that following year.
Right. But if.
The scholarship aspect, yes. So anytime we charge a fee that's instituted by the school committee in part of our budget offset, we do have a formula that we do scholarships. We give 100% off, 75, 50, 25. And it's based off the federal poverty rate versus the state poverty rate. Oh, no, sorry. Kindergarten is based off of the state poverty rate, not the federal.
Okay. Thank you.
We have two different rates.
So this is just sort of the, in the end, in the first two scenarios, we recommend using the additional Chapter 70 funds from FY '20 to, and to set up the opportunity to bridge the funding. And in the third scenario, we propose using the additional funding for one-time costs that would, that's really key. Because the only way it works is for that money to be available in FY '21 and not have been already promised to other salaries that aren't part of your equation. Option A eliminates the fee in FY '21. Option B reduces the fee to 525 and eliminates it in FY '22. And Option C reduces the fee to 1,050 and eliminates it in FY '22.
Mayor Cahill?
Thanks, Madam President. Just again, clarifying. First two scenarios, we are recommending using the additional Chapter 70 funds?
173, 770. No, 173, 770.
So they're just, so using additional Chapter 70 funds from FY '20, but not all of them?
Right.
The 173.
173, 770.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you. Ms. Visnick?
I, earlier this evening, you spoke about not under, not yet having all of the constraints around the Student Opportunity Act funds. Can you speak to your confidence level that we can, in fact, spend this year's money in this way?
Yes, we can.
And then are we, as a group, going to speak? And that's, the question is maybe more for the chair, but maybe it's for you, you guys too, around what else are we considering for this year on which we could spend that approximately 200,000 that we have left of that extra money this year?
So I am confident that we can spend that money any way we want. We've already accepted it into our budget, and there, there were no restrictions placed on the money that came in this year. The restrictions come because the Student Opportunity Act wasn't actually finalized and passed when we got that money. This new money that's coming, the 1,005,000, and I don't know if it's the whole 1,005,000, I don't know if it's some of it. That information is still forthcoming. But I have 100% confidence that we can spend the money that's sitting in that AD account any way we want right now. And in terms of that, I would defer to Rachel in terms of how that discussion would look like.
Sure. So we did intentionally break up the agenda items so that we could spend the next portion of our agenda, looking at the priorities, making some initial passes at that, and asking the administration to come back with additional information. These were just three of the, really, the most prevalent informational areas that we thought we'd get the conversation started with this evening. But we have some lists up behind us. And when we get to the next agenda item, we'll take a look at that.
Okay. So this was informational for you, and passing it back to you in terms of.
Sure. Do we have any more questions on the three plans that Ms. Trocheck, Dr. Trocheck has outlined for us?
Okay.
Yep. We will move along in our agenda. So in our budget cycle, now is the time that we really need to listen to recommendations from the stakeholders, as well as provide direction to our administration on how they'd like to see us construct our budget for the next school year. Dr. Trocheck and Dr. Flaherty have brought in a few, I guess, sticky notes, consolidating the various priorities that have come up in the discussions. We saw them in the slide that Dr. Trocheck and Dr. Flaherty had given us at the beginning. What we'd like to do is to just take a break for a few minutes. Ms. Robinson, you have some markers next to you. That's part of this next process. We'd like each school committee member to just mark three of the priorities that we might want to investigate further, that are priorities we want to consider for our budget going forward. And then we're going to take a look at those and decide if we need to go up and make an additional mark. Sure.
If I could ask a very direct question. Is there any, is there a pretty strong sense that we're going to do something with kindergarten fees this year? Dr. Trocheck and team put together, and thank you for all that work. I guess what I'm asking is, I'm assuming we're going to do something with kindergarten fees again. And I'd like to then have three more places to put a, you know, to make it, do you know what I'm saying?
Well, we want to keep the math simple to start. So if we could limit it to three, and if you want to make that assumption and assign your three elsewhere, then we'll sit down, we'll reflect and decide if we need to go put a fourth, or we'll, we'll come to some consensus, I think.
Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Visnick, do you have another question?
Yeah, because I feel like this conversation is to try to help instruct our administrative team how to build next year's budget. And I think that the mayor's question is absolutely relevant to the extra money that we have, quote unquote, "this year", that we could be spending this year versus, in essence, spending next year. And I have a very, a very strong opinion, if, 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 if we were asked to really answer what the mayor asked, I certainly have a very strong opinion about that. However, I don't think that my opinion should be fully formed yet. Because, for instance, if, if the administration said, like they did with the high school counselor, "We really have a need for this position, and therefore, we want, you know, we want to make a case. We can hire somebody mid-year to fill this position, to do this thing, and we have a need for that thing in our district", then that would change my opinion. So I, I want to talk about the money in two separate buckets. And it seems like we're going to talk about it in one bucket. Buckets.
I, I think some of the nuance is that if we make a decision about this year's money and commit it to something other than a one-time expense, then it takes away from the future conversation.
Fair enough. I'm good.
So we, we couldn't necessarily spend that in one way and then to have a different decision for our next budget.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay. So maybe we can try the exercise, and now we'll see where we land and decide if we need to have another go. So I don't know if you can read them from where you are. You might need to get a little closer. Try not to scare too many germs. Just check marks. We'll just, it's like a scatter, a scatter. Thank you.
Multiple options, yeah.
Whatever's available.
Let me give you the best.
Oh, you're the best. I didn't even wear orange shirts, Jared.
Yeah. Doing good. Fine. This is fun.
Did you pick three?
I did.
I'm going to step out and possibly run tomorrow.
It's hard. You don't want to second-guess yourself and trust the process.
Which ones? The two and social issues? But they must not be, because they've got different positions in mind. If these could be represented by. So you think that's a commonality?
[laughter]
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 Okay, Bev Cam, we'll be calling back to formal order. Okay. So with that exercise, it seems that we have a couple of items that clearly bubbled up with a majority or a sub, submajority. And I think at this time, we need to probably add an additional check. So if there was something that you didn't check the first time, you want to go back. I did document where we ended up after this round with the circled numbers totaling. But we can go through and just add one more item. This will help give direction to the administration if we need more information about any of these items, some of which Dr. Trocheck can address this evening, and some of which may require some additional information to be brought to us as a future committee of the whole. If people are so compelled, if you're happy with your three. If people are so compelled, if you're happy with your three, then it'll be the numbers where they are. And please don't add to one that you've already added. I think we're all honest.
No, the one where I would put it in Missouri is already in the top three.
Well, it's already in the top three, do you want to add one more?
Sure, Assistant Jean.
Assistant Jean?
Assistant Jean?
Okay, so our... You're all set? Okay, so we're still seeing three and one, we have seven now. Guess we know where that conversation is going, let's see.
That was actually three and three already. That brace there was supposed to be somebody.
Okay, so this is six, but combining these two, so we'll need some information about what the differentiation was. Okay. And now career path, please, Assistant Jean. Thank you. Based on this, it looks like we have a pretty strong majority that's interested in exploring the kindergarten fee reduction. Are we prepared this evening to have a discussion about the three options that were put forward? To give direction, okay. Who would like to start? Ms. Wiznick?
I'll just go big or go home. I'll make a motion that we go with Plan A.
I'll second that. So there's a motion on the table to put forward a planned budget with Version A, which is a full elimination of the kindergarten fee in next fiscal year. Not today. Okay. Do we want to have any discussion about Mr. K., Dr. -- sorry.
Thanks, Madam President. I guess I just want to ask Dr. Trocheck to walk us through two things. One that's directly relevant, and that is, I thought I followed it well there, but now I still have a question. In FY21, if we eliminate the fee entirely for FY21, what is the additional FY21 cost?
Yep, so I think there are... So in terms of if we utilize the contingency and we utilize the $200 of the revolving, the kindergarten teacher salary, the only increase would be the increase to the half-day kindergarten teacher. We anticipate that'd be about $25,000. And an increase to the halftime para in that classroom, which would be about $9,000. So there would be an increased cost, but we're confident that we can manage that.
And along those same lines, we have 400 children in kindergarten this year?
Correct.
So the fear that we might not be topped out is a little less of a fear.
If we were still at 360, I think I would have more concerns, but we...
That we might add another section as well.
But we might need another... At this point, I'm not... We don't anticipate being over... We don't have any grade levels that are over, even our highest other bubble, which is the current sixth grade is at 398. So 403 is a really big number for us. And we have held the first day of kindergarten registration, and compared to last year... Well, we've held all three days, so Bethany's giving me the hand signal update. So, and we are not on course to be exceeding what we were last year. So that's one thing. The only other area, and again, this would require us... If we are... The consideration would be to attempt to put everybody back in their home school at kindergarten registration. We would, however, probably still continue to need to close it off if a school got full and continue to have a couple of kids have to go to another school. An example would be if Cove School is at capacity on June 1st. Anyone that registers for Cove School might need to be placed in another school, but we certainly would have seats in another school for that. Our perfect goal would be that everyone gets to go to their home school. The only... But to do that, if we were really going to stick to that, we might end up having to add a section or two. So at least for the time being, we would be looking at maintaining, you know, the ratio of numbers of classrooms that we have, four, three, three, four, and three. And we'd look at placements of those classes. If, for example, Centerville had a bubble up and Hannah had a decrease, we might have four at Centerville and three at Hannah. We'd look at it that way through the registration process. But then we'd, you know, attempting to keep as many kids as we can in their home school.
So additional costs, if we go eliminate the fee, we recognize that the revolving fund monies will be spent down, but we're not viewing that as additional costs. We're viewing that as taking that to use it. I mean, obviously, it's paying for something, but... So it's really that 35-ish thousand?
Yep.
Okay.
And in terms of classrooms, we're already in 18 classrooms, 18 sets of classroom material, 18 sets of furniture. You know, those were in the years that we were adding new full-day classrooms, those were big expenses that were hitting us. We already have 18 kindergarten classrooms. So we're not adding classrooms, we're not looking at adding materials, other than whatever we would normally add. We're not looking at furniture costs or any of those things. We would be in good shape in terms of that.
Thank you.
Ms. Wiznick?
I guess I want to... I want to hear again that this year's additional monies are not necessar... Are not, like, contractually obligated, like we expect next year's monies to be, from a justification point of view. If, in fact, this year's monies were... Had some strings attached, that's a term that we've used previously, then I would feel that we would need to justify that spending the funds in this way would meet those requirements. I clearly have been an advocate for this, so I want this to happen. However, I don't want it to happen, quote-unquote, "at the expense of something else that perhaps we should be doing." So, and then kind of to pile on that, to go back to the question I posed earlier, which is, as administrative, as our educational leader, do you feel that there is, for instance, a position or two positions that we can or should hire mid-year, right now, with that $200,000? You know, is there anything that you would say? "I think we should spend the money this way, we have this need." Because if you don't have that, this is like a slam dunk, even for a five-foot-six person.
So I think, I actually think we made that statement when we asked for the outreach council at the high school. That was a position that we needed, that we felt a desperate need for, that we've put in place, that's had an immediate impact, positive impact on students at the high school and on student outcomes. And so we did say that once already, and we didn't have anything else, or else I think we would have come forward the way we did with the counselor. I think, you know, if you're asking for... I think personally, this is a great opportunity, and it's a perfect storm that came about because of the hard work that you all did in terms of lowering the fee over the course of the last three years, as well as the planning that has gone into making sure that we're meeting the needs of kids in kindergarten. And we're at a point now where we have 22 half-day students. And so clearly, there's a need for and a call for full-day kindergarten. I think in terms of, either way, I would advocate that we use the $230,000 on one-time expenses if we weren't going to use it for kindergarten. And so that's a different story, you know, what kinds of things would we look for? A box truck, or, you know, maybe a minivan for transportation, or, you know, at this point in time... We took care of a few of the immediate needs that we had by the transfers that we did out of the '74. So we've made some nice upgrades at the middle and high schools to try to help for health and safety of our students, trying to hopefully encourage healthy habits, if I want to say it that way, at the middle and high school. You know, we've made some decisions around that money that freed us up to be able to do that. And, you know, Jean and I have been kind of cooking this up for about three months. So that was purposeful when we did that. We wanted to be able to be confident about having the funds available that we needed. And you still have, you'll still have $53,000 in that contingency for some, for anything you want after this, if you use the $173,770, because it's not taking all $230. So I do not, at this point in time, have something that's pressing the way that the outreach counselor for the high school was. And we did do that, and, you know, I thank you for that, because that was a really... But again, that's a salary. And so when we did that, we have to make sure that we have that salary money for next year, so.
And again, no strings attached to this.
There are no strings attached, it's already in our account. We can do anything we want.
I'm gonna call myself. I think, based on your question, I want to ask a clarifying question. If your motion was to eliminate the fee for FY21, or if it's to direct the superintendent to plan the budget around the fee? Because fees are one of those things that are set by the school committee. We eliminated the parking fee straight out in a meeting, and, you know, it was obligatory that the budget reflected that. Can I just have a clarified statement? I wrote down a few notes, but I didn't quite hear what your motion was.
My motion is to eliminate the fee for FY21. For FY21.
For FY20.
Sorry, Bethany.
I just wanted to make sure that that motion was clear. It's not to direct the budget necessarily, it's to eliminate the fee that will be built into the budget.
If I'm not mistaken, the next step, if the committee tonight votes to eliminate the fee for FY21, the next step will be for Jean to request a transfer of funds at the next meeting for, at the next FNF meeting, for the $173,770 to be moved from the AD contingency. And she's going to move them, not into one account, but she's going to, wherever those salaries need to be. So that will be up to Jean, she'll come forward with that. Then our appropriated money will be $104,000. And then we will use the $200,000 of the revolving. So it's more, at that point, it's about transfers. So I think that would come through FNF the way that it would normally go.
Just wanted to make sure that's clear, Mayor Cahill?
So then that $173 will go into those accounts, thereby necessitating less of the revolving fund be used this year, more available for the next two. And then that $173 will be in those lines for next year.
Exactly, yep. And then the next year, we'll use the $200. And then, as we go planning into the FY22 year, we'll use the appropriated funds that are coming in from Chapter 70-plus, whatever, that balance of that revolving fund, that's the last time we'll have that revolving. It will get used up, and then the following year, FY23, it will all be out of appropriated, thus eliminating the fee.
Do we have any more questions, comments, discussion? Are we ready to vote?
This is like surreal.
Couple years coming. Okay, all those in favor of eliminating the full-day kindergarten fee for FY21? We have unanimous seven, thank you.
That's pretty good stuff.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn. Keep them wanting more.
Okay, so we have some other higher priority items, and we also have the opportunity to ask our administration to provide more information, either tonight or in a future meeting. Being respectful of everyone's time and understanding the building mechanics, let us down. We do have a little bit of housekeeping, which I can squish, and we have a statement of interest letter. With that said, and knowing that it's 9:20-ish, we have quite a few marks next to the Assistant Business Analyst, which we've discussed in some detail in our prior term. I don't know if it would benefit the new members to hear just a little estimate and overview of what that position might entail. And then we also have the counseling support, and it's combined with a trauma-sensitive classroom, I don't know.
So if I... I'll try to go quickly to summarize. I see and hear the questions regarding the two being very similar. In fact, there's a... I think that coming forward with a proposal around... I think that the call is for us to do something around social-emotional. And we don't have a presentation made yet, like we did. That's how we like to work, though, so that's kind of how we roll. So in thinking about what that would look like, we have, we do know that we have a need to find some way to support counselors in some of our schools, whether that is through behavior specialists that supports the counselors, whether that's additional school adjustment counselors, whether that's buoying some of the therapeutic services that we offer. And I'm not ready to say I'd pick one, two, or three. What I'm going to say is that we want to make sure that, as a... It's a priority of the committee, as we build a budget, that we take a look at some of those monies. And quite honestly, that SOA money absolutely is, this is absolutely something that is eligible for Student Opportunity Act funding. And so really, we haven't, we don't have a succinct plan for you right now, we just know we need to do it. And again, much like we did with Kate, I think it's a matter of what are our needs? Doing an audit almost of what does Betty need for supports at the high school? What does the middle school need? What would it look like? It might look different at the high school than it does at the middle school, because it's not a one-size-fits-all. What do we need to do for the elementary level? And so, I mean, it's just in general, knowing that as a priority, when we look to do things, we would then cost out for you some kind of information about what proposals we might have. And again, so Dot and I, we kept saying, as we were preparing for today's meeting, that we're not finished with our entry plan, but we've done the legwork, we're putting it together. That's driving a lot of what we're doing, it's helping us recognize, like, the curriculum support. That work was done a year and a half ago, but digging it out again, as Dot's doing her document review, and applying it to what we see now, and what's working and what isn't working, and how is that, you know, working for us. So all I can say is there would be more information that I would probably need to give you, but knowing that that's a real priority for the leadership, it's a priority for the committee, and so how do we come forward with specifics on that?
Would it be a fair ask to have some proposals for our February committee of the whole?
I think it would be a fair ask to have some ideas. I don't know if we'd have specific positions, but definitely some more information around that. I think that's what we would be exploring, and you can...
I would just add, so just to kind of give you a concrete, I always like to be able to wrap something around it. One example that we know is bubbling to the top is with your support. We put in the support room in the middle school this year, and it's staffed with a counselor, which has been tremendous support for students. But one of the things that we're finding is that she's busy meeting the mental health needs of students, and the academic support that students need while they're in that room is lacking. So we may be bringing forward a... An ask for a teacher to help support the academic side of what's going on in there while she's presenting the mental health side.
Mayor Cahill?
I just want to share this, because I think everything we're talking about with social-emotional learning is on the right track. I was last week at the winter U.S. Mayors Meeting, and there were a group of students from a really incredible program who presented to us. One of the students was a college-age student from India, and he made the point that his generation, today's kids, are going to be the most technologically proficient generation ever. And he argued that they're also going to be among the least optimistic, unhappiest generation ever. And he talked about how in his province in India, several years ago, they instituted a K-12 happiness curriculum. And it... The things he had to say about, I mean, so it's all in that, right? This is what we're talking about, resiliency, we're talking about optimism, we're talking about young people learning to like who they're seeing in the mirror every day. And it's not, I mean, there's a lot more to it. But I just wanted to mention that it's being focused on in other places, and I think effectively in different ways. So I'm excited to hear more when you folks are ready to, you know, to come our way with it.
Ms. Wiznick?
I think it's important to reference back to the blue slides that you put up at the very beginning of the evening that lay out what our contractual obligations are, what our baseline budget numbers are. And keep in mind that we are heading into negotiations as we head back to the financial forecasting meeting tomorrow night. All of those variables, I think... All of those variables, I think, will, it's quite possible that, that what the city can provide, what the city can and will reasonably provide to the schools is going to be a quote-unquote "service-level funded" budget. And so the more of these things that we can fit into our plan for next year that can be funded out of the Student Opportunity Act, the better off we're going to be. I don't, having, you know, already been playing with numbers, especially given the, the blue presentation that you gave earlier, I don't anticipate there being much, if any, wiggle room in our city appropriated funds for which to do real change. And that has been the case over the last several years, and will probably continue, excuse me, continue to be the case. So in that sense, I guess I feel, I just want to kind of point out that if there's anything else on that board that we can do that can justifiably be funded out of the SOA money, that I would appreciate you bring it to the table, even if it's not one of those numbers, one of the top numbers, I guess.
I will say that one of the things that I feel very fortunate about is that the work that we've been doing in Beverly for the last two or three years has been in the direction that the SOA money is being offered to districts to move in that direction. So, so we already are, you know, so, so there's not a lot of things that we do that really wouldn't qualify. I, I'm not concerned that we don't, the, the challenge that I have is working and identifying and, and being able to utilize it in a way that's effective and that makes sense and that meets the needs, looking at, not having a one-size-fits-all and saying that we're going to, we're going to get, you know, seven new school adjustment councils and put one at every building because that's what they need. Because that's not what every building needs. Every building needs something different. And so that's what makes it so complicated. It's not one easy thing to say that we're just going to, I don't want to just dump more bodies in a building. I want to say, just like we did with Kate, what does this building need? They need someone that can do this, that has this skill set. She was the perfect skill set for what needed to happen, and she's been very effective at bringing it. Betty says, "When do I get my Kate?" All the time, right? So, you know, I mean, the high school has a, but it's a little bit different set of needs. And so, you know, I'm very cognizant of making sure that whatever I bring forward, everything on, there are things, everything that I would need is on that list. It's probably, doesn't have as many checkmarks next to the ones that you guys, I mean, I would have had, in my mind, if we improve our alignment and we look at our relevance of our curriculum, and we're doing more project-based learning, and we're raising the level of engagement of students, that impacts social-emotional learning. Everyone feels better. They're more engaged. They feel welcome. They feel belonged. So there's, there's other ways to address, address social-emotional learning besides just the maladaptive behaviors, right? I think that a strong curriculum with good alignment and good relevance is going to be a good tier one of social-emotional. It's going to make sure that we're addressing the needs of kids in the classrooms when we need to. So those are, there's not anything that, up there that I can't make work for what I feel like keeps us going on the path. And I think getting direction from you around, how do you want me to, how do you, what is, what is really of importance to you helps me figure out how do we put together some more of these presentations? So I don't know if that answered your question.
Well, I'll, from my perspective, I, I take to heart what Dr. Churchek said at the beginning about the reallocation of resources and rethinking about the way we do things.
It's really important.
Resource constraints, whether it be at our budget level, as a school committee or as a district, at the city level, at the state level, the country, our environment, like, we're always going to be resource constrained. And sometimes you have to figure out what we need to stop doing or do differently. It's not always going to be a plus, a plus, a plus for some of those resources. We can hopefully find ways to do things that meet the needs of our students.
So for...
I was just, I was just going to say, I just learned in finance and facilities meeting last week, how much, how many students have been coming back into the district? And we'll be saving an awful lot of money by putting in therapeutic classrooms. If we put, if we put that into, into the budget, we're going to save a tremendous amount of money that we won't have, hopefully won't have to send students out, which is a, be a huge difference.
I think one of the, I always take to heart, and it was a couple of years ago, when Jeff Lawrence, who just spoke to the superintendents, but, and he was, he was doing a group for the leadership, but he said, "One of the biggest challenges we have is we keep perpetuating some of our own problems by not rethinking what we're doing and not looking differently at how we can do it." You can't, just like you can't keep adding to a teacher's plate about what they have to teach in a six-hour day without taking something off their plate, we kind of need to take a, a close look at how, how are we structuring our curriculum leadership? And is it working? And are there changes that need to come about the way that we're doing business that's more effective? And so that's our goal, which is why it's hard for me to come in and say, I, I don't want to come too fast and say, "Here's how we can address social-emotional." I want to kind of work very closely with people and do some realignment and see how that works, and then do a little more reali... And I know that's frustrating because it's easier if I just had a menu and said, "Check, check, check" on these three things, but...
Well, it's still only January.
Yeah. That's true. That's true.
I just wanted to quickly add that, to make sure that we keep a broad vision when we think about social-emotional learning, because it doesn't always mean an adjustment counselor or a guidance counselor. Some of the best vision of social-emotional integrated learning you can see, go to any one of the five elementary schools and go to morning meeting. And they are embedding it, and it hits all of the key pieces of what we want when we are looking at our five components of social-emotional learning.
I can add just a personal anecdote. I think the morning munchkins math is a great confidence boost, that, you know, the happiness factor that Doc, that Mayor Cahill mentioned. I think there's lots of things that we can look at. Okay. So we're asking for some more information, whatever shape that could be.
So around the social-emotional learning in particular is one thing. And I see that there's some checks around the career pathways. So, you know, I think that what we heard tonight is a great example, but that's, that's, that came to us, I actually chased Heidi across the parking lot on the Cape, saying, "Why is Gloucester and PBD doing this? Why not Beverly?" So I think pursuing that and getting some real numbers, and also that grant process should be done by March 13th. So hopefully, before we have to finalize, we'll know what the grant funding would look like for that.
And I think I understood, you don't need action from us this evening. However, there'll be additional information coming forward through the Curriculum Instruction Subcommittee.
Right. And I guess the only question that I would ask, is that something you want to pursue even if we don't get the grant? Or you want to see numbers about what that would like, like if we don't get the grant? Or is that something that is only going to be grant-dependent? Those are, those are questions that I have, and...
We, we have conversations about career pathways already happening at our high school.
Correct.
So this would be...
Right.
And in addition to...
It's, it would be one of the career pathways that we talk about.
Do we want to provide?
I can, I can wait and come back in a month and hear how you feel about that. You know, in the meantime, though, we are pursuing introducing it because we can't, if we wait, we won't get the right kids. We won't be able to reach the right students, I don't think.
So given, given what the other superintendent said, I'm so great with names, I would actually make a motion that we move forward with that because it will be reimbursable, right? With the Chapter 74 money? And then it's eligible for the SOA funds? I would make a motion that we move forward with that, regardless of grant money.
Okay. So I think the proper procedure, bring it to Curriculum Instruction, Student Life, or do we make the motion right here at this stage?
Yes. If, so I guess, say that.
It would be helpful if you made that and voted on it tonight. It, it will still come through SISL to add into the Program of Studies, but Betty's kind of under a time constraint because they're going to start scheduling and registering classes for next year in the middle of February. So you won't be all together again before that process starts.
I mean, just the motion that we would be committing to a partnership that was available through them.
So Ms. Biznick has made a motion to move forward. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm not sure I really followed well the funding earlier when...
I'll try, I'll try one more time.
On the Chapter 74 piece, we would never see that. That would go directly to them, correct?
No. We would, we would be getting it. We would be, so the MOU would be for $120,000. So we would collect the Chapter 70 and the Chapter 74 money. What I'm not 100% clear on is, so when we get an incremental for special education, we get the full amount of the Chapter 70 for the full-time student plus the incremental for special ed? I'm not sure if it's not 50% of the Chapter 74. She said the 88,000. So I don't know whether we'd get the 20, we get 8093, she gets 89, you know, like, I think that the money would come in. I think we would be getting what we get for our Chapter 70 and the Chapter 74 money from her. So yes.
I'm, I'm just struggling with the logic of the funding because we would be taking some of our students, and they would essentially go from being full-time Beverly High students to half-time Beverly High, half-time...
I think technically they stay Beverly High students. We claim them as Chapter 74 students. We pay the, the Essex Tech as a partner to, it's like a two, it's like sending them over there, but they are still matriculated. They get a Beverly High School diploma. So that money comes to us, and we pay whatever we agree to pay to Essex Tech.
And you're saying the state would send Chapter 74...
It would come in, it would come, we, we get...
...tech money to us.
Right. Because we get a Perkins Grant right now already. So it's all in that CVTE.
And yet, that's, that comes a year late.
It does come a year late.
Okay. So, and, and Dr. Riccio talked about applying for a grant through whom?
Yes.
For how much?
DESI.
Through DESI.
The applications are open. She's specifically naming Beverly and North Shore Essex Tech as the partners. It's funding that's available. I think she's pretty confident that we would be a good eligible candidate. It's the same grant they got for PBD and Salem.
Any sense of how much of the cost of the program they see covered by the grant?
Up to 150,000. It would be, we would, essentially, it wouldn't cost us anything next year if we got the grant. It's the, it's to bridge it over, and then it wouldn't be until next year. And then, then I believe we're talking about adding about a $60,000 cost because I don't think the Chapter 74 is going to cover all of the students. Did you...
I totally agree. Yes.
But we won't know about that grant application until...
Probably till April 1st, maybe even April 15.
Maybe April 2nd.
Maybe not. Yeah, not April 1st, sorry.
I know the timeline you mentioned was relatively imperative to, to move forward. Do we know when the memorandum of understanding would need to be signed, when we'd be really committed to?
I would say, as soon as you approve it, she'd send it to us and we'd sign it. I would say that.
So whether it's 10 or 12 kids, or whether it's 36 kids, it's going to be 120 to 150,000? That's kind of what I thought I heard earlier. However, if they don't, if, if they're not successful in...
Yes. And I'm, and I'm going to say yes because I do believe that it's not really, they aver, they say it costs about 10,000, but remember, she said there are various seats in various programs.
Right.
And unless they have to add a teacher, they're not adding to our cost. So I'm going to say that I agree with you. I will get clarification from her, obviously, before. But yes, I would agree with you that that's the estimated cost because it's about adding a teacher, and we cost you that teacher with the other four communities that are going. There are a lot of factors that would be involved in that, so.
And she seemed fairly optimistic that whether it's 10 or 12 kids, or whether it's 36, that their buses won't fill up and they won't have to add another bus driver.
We're going to, so I have said that we're going to, we're going to send a bus. We're going to do a midday run from Beverly there.
But I'm talking about the dismissal time.
They would get on the Beverly bus.
I'm getting, getting the kids back.
Yep.
So nonetheless, if they don't get the grant, we would need to come up with 120 to 150,000, and that could leave us in a place of, of not meeting some other, some other commitment that we want to meet.
Um, no. I, I mean, I, I think, we know it's eligible for the SOA money. So it would be a choice that we're making out of the priorities and if, that, that we were going to do that. And then if the grant came, we would be able to...
So, so the 2.2 that you've calculated out to be a level service requirement for next year, does that include the healthcare increase?
Yes.
At what percent? I, I think you're carrying five?
Five.
Okay. Hmm.
Ms. Freddie?
Just had one question. Is this agreement a contractual year-to-year? Like, if in three years, it's not...
Well, I would have hoped that it were entering for two years because if we commit our juniors in, we want to make sure they can go for the second year.
Right.
But then I think whether or not we would send more juniors the next year would be the decision.
It'd be evaluated.
So we would be agreeing that these students would go for two years, and then we would be looking at it.
Okay.
I guess just in general, I mean, from, from my time in the high school, from my conversations with Betty, from my conversations with the guidance, there, they, the guidance at Beverly High School is so excited about this because we, we believe this is something we need for our kids, as well as it really provides a really good model as we build other pathways, whether it's in the health field and we look to partner with Beverly Hospital, or whether it's in another field and we're looking for other partners. We're establishing kind of a really nice idea about what those pathways can look like. So that's all. That's my only pitch.
I'll call myself. I, I think in conversations that I've had with parents, this is something that, you know, people wish we had more seats available for Essex Tech, but it's almost the best of both worlds.
And I will say, remember, the kids that, that do enter into this program, it is a rigorous and a full commitment. I mean, I think one of the things that other communities struggle with is that it, I think the kids don't realize it, it, it's, they're committing to doing this. But there are, we know there are kids for whom they, they're ready for this at this point in their, when they're sophomores, and they're, they're thinking this four-year college thing isn't going to work for me, or if it is, I want to explore other options before I do that. And so we definitely, it's a need.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table to give administration the go-ahead to explore the memorandum of understanding with Essex Tech, starting for next school year, FY '21. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Ms. Freddie?
Is the motion to sign the MO you, or, or discuss it? I didn't, I...
Is that your motion?
My motion is to, to do it.
To do it.
Do it.
She's going big today.
Going big, going big today. It's the pneumonia talking. Let's go.
Okay. So we're done with the conversation? Ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor of entering into memorandum of understanding with Essex Tech? Okay. Another unanimous.
Thank you.
Come here on antibiotics more often.
That's wonderful. Okay. So, Business Analyst, I think at the end of last year, you presented some figures and some ideas of the different aspects of this opportunity.
Right. So I would like to do is bring something forward to the next meeting, like Dr. Churchek said about the other thing. But mainly it is, you know, to help with the business office, with me, and helping with the preparation of budgets. You know, one of the things I want to talk further to Dr. Churchek on, well, how, how much of the aspects do we want it to be with grants and et cetera, et cetera? So I have an idea of what it does, but I don't want to just...
Sure. We'll look forward to more information at our February Committee of the Whole. Okay. I don't want to miss any of the others. Any committee member feel that there's any other additional information topics that Any committee member feel that there's any other additional information topics that we would like to ask for a future meeting? Okay. So we'll leave it to the administration if they, if they have...
We'll take those back and we'll sort through and maybe we'll do a few more presentations for you the next time we do this.
Thank you very much. Okay. And then just quickly, I wanted to remind everyone of our budget timeline this year. Ms. Sherburne had provided this to us earlier. I'll make sure that all members have a copy of it. Just outlines the general timing. We are driving towards a public hearing date of May 13th. And what is typical is we wait a week or so to vote. Our current timeline has us voting May 27th, but potentially that could be earlier. So just keep your calendars aligned. Yeah, May, May 20th or, or even, you know, May 14th or 15th. That's what I was thinking. Okay. So...
So right now, it's on the agenda on our budget timeline for the next Committee of the Hall. What we talked about is after we have the public hearing, the next week, we could add a Committee of the Hall after, I think it's finance and facilities.
Okay. Let's just keep that, that timeline in mind as we have our continued discussions. Sure. We can have this. The 13th will be our public hearing for our budget. Okay. We have some housekeeping items I'd like to cover, but in the interest of time, I'm going to skip ahead to a statement of interest letter. So Dr. Trocheck can just give us a little bit of information about what the MSBA is up to this year?
So, last year, Steve Hershey, Dr. Hershey submitted a, a letter, a statement of interest for roofs. At the time when they did it, they said that any roof that was 20 years or older would be eligible, you could submit a statement of interest. So I added it to the agenda to make sure that if I needed to, I could get approval from the school committee. But I also want to inform you before we take any action, that this year, the requirement is that roofs must be 25 years or older. And we do not have a roof in Beverly that's 25 years or older. So my original proposal would be that we were going to look at the Ayers Roof and the Centerville Roof, because those are the roofs that were, the Ayers Roof is the oldest and Centerville, there's been some questions about what could be done. It's the only gavel roof, there's lots of technical reasons. However, it's only 17 years old. Neither of them are going to be eligible. So I don't know, I think I'm coming forward to say, I just want permission to not submit a statement of interest because we're not eligible. And I don't want to go through that whole process if, if it's not. If I thought that it would put us in better stead by putting it in every year until they're 25 years old, but I don't believe that's the case. I believe that at this point in time, we, we just don't, we're not eligible. And as a matter of fact, even when they said 20 years old, they only awarded 27 years and older last year. So they're, they're just going to take the application and put it aside. They're not going to give it any credence.
And just a reminder to everybody, I think McEwen's the oldest of the roofs, unless there's been work done on it that I missed. So McEwen's the oldest of the...
It could be. Mike Collins and, and Steve Hershey worked on this last year, so...
So McEwen was opened in 98, I think?
I think it's programmatically ineligible, is what Dr. Hershey had mentioned.
Because it's not...
Because of what we do and don't do in that building?
Yes, preschool.
So, so then, that's the oldest in 98, which makes it, I guess, 22 years old.
Twenty-two, yep.
And then it's each, 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 each other school is one year older than the next than the next. We were, we were able to do a school a year for several years. So we certainly want MSBA help to replace those roofs. And I think we talked about it last year some, that it probably makes sense to win for two or three roofs at a time as opposed to one and one and one and one. But it, as, as you said, Dr. Trocheck, the, the eligibility just isn't there yet. So, okay. Thanks.
Do you want us to make a formal motion to tell you to stand down?
That would be nice.
I'll make that motion that we tell Dr. Trocheck not to submit on behalf of Beverly Public Schools. Second? Okay. Ms. Freddie? Okay. All those in favor of not going? Okay. Is that seven? Okay. Thank you. Okay. And that brings us to the housekeeping items from the chair. In the interest of time, I will try to speed across and convey what I'm looking for permission from this body to do. First of all, in your packet, you received a sample of different agenda formats from different school districts. We don't need to go into the details of all of those samples, but what I wanted permission to do, and it is by policy, the role of the chair with help from the superintendent to set the agendas, is to look at updating our templates for our executive secretary to include some of the elements that would provide additional clarity, a reminder of our mission, some branding for our district, and to potentially include preformed sets of tables of maybe motions that we may be making. Obviously, we have the freedom to amend the suggested language, but to help us formalize what motions we are bringing forward. And I think tonight, my request for clarifications about what our motions were might be a good example of how we could just be a little better and be a little more transparent as we post our agendas, what our intentions are for our meetings. Do I have general consensus to take a look at the template as the chair?
Sure.
Okay. And the next was a reminder for folks that our policy does require that when we communicate with each other, it is for organizational purposes and that we are to copy Donna Bergeron in the office on all of our communications. We also had discussed at our standing committee meeting at City Hall, a request to look at our meeting records and our procedures. We have received guidance from MASC and also I had met with Dr. Trocheck and Ms. Bergeron at the end of our last term to talk about our meeting records. What I'd like to request from the body is that if we do have changes or edits that we want to see made to our meeting minutes, that we work with Ms. Bergeron to create a track changes version in advance of our meeting so that we have something to vote on. The way that open meeting law works, our minutes actually can only be seen by a less than a majority. So for these meetings, our secretary will do a review and as chair of this committee, I'll take a review for our subcommittees. Only the chair and the recording secretary would be able to look at the minutes in advance and to have any editing. So that way, we don't violate open meeting law by amending our, our meeting records outside of open session. So if I have agreement at the table, if we, if we do have concerns with our meeting records that are coming forward, please do work with Ms. Bergeron in advance to create a track changes version. I know when we get the PDF, it's a little bit difficult, but there is an avenue for Ms. Bergeron to share out to you a copy to suggest any edits. The other agreement that we had reached was to reference BEV CAM. Rather than really documenting whole conversations, rather, our meeting records should just reflect the actions that we're taking and the votes. General conversation, and we will be attaching all of our presentation materials when they are published. Okay. Another request I have from the body is to do a little bit of legwork about remote participation. I had a conversation with our outgoing city clerk, Wes Slate, to discover that we don't necessarily have a formal policy or set of procedures on how we'll have remote participation. And when we attended the MASC training session, they did remind us that we need to be pretty specific about what technology we're going to use, how members of the audience can see and hear remote participants, how we will have recorded votes. So with everyone's consensus, I'd like to do some more research to make sure that not only do we have the mayor's authorization as a body to do this, but we actually go through the additional steps to make sure we've documented how we're going to do it. I know that we've had some need due to injuries or, or travel or things like that in the past, but looking forward, I want to make sure that we've established the right protocol. I'm seeing a lot of head nods. Okay. I will do some homework on that.
Madam President, I'd just add, we, the Solicitor's Office has documentation that we, that we use when we put together the policy for city boards and commissions.
So that, that actually, thank you for that reminder. One of our policies is that when we do talk to the city solicitor or to our own council, that we have done that with the board's permission. So I'd actually like to entertain a motion to seek permission to speak with the city solicitor on this matter.
Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. Next housekeeping item is to discuss and put out their feelers for what dates we might have a retreat where we can talk about a variety of objectives. One of the objectives is to decide what we want to talk about at the retreat. But the prior term did not formally adopt the norms and protocols, which is a recommendation that MASC has reminded us of the importance. Those norms and protocols copy how we prepare for meetings, they talk about chains of communication, how we address issues in public, either social media or the press. So there's a lot of sort of housekeeping that we can do, not at this table, but maybe in a retreat setting. I would recommend that we also consider inviting our MASC resources to the table to address a few topics. Open meeting law, we did receive some training and information in the last term, but I think that's useful as a reminder and for our new members. So I was thinking that we might want to invite someone from MASC to perhaps assist, facilitate with our norms and protocol discussion, but also provide us some education. And one other item that we have outstanding is the superintendent evaluation process. We received some training from MASC last summer, but again, we have a new composition